Dear Lord, we gather together here today to tend on doing good work. We seek to represent fairly and well for those who have given us this responsibility. May our efforts be blessed with insight guided by understanding and wisdom. We seek to serve and respect for all. May all of our personal faith give us strength to act honestly and well in all matters before us. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. With a regular public meeting, Henry County Board of Commissioners, six thirty PM Tuesday, June the seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, come to order. Before I ask the Board to consider accepting the agenda, I'd like to make an announcement that you'll notice here that Commissioner from District Three is missing, Gary Barn. They had some, a situation in Afghanistan several weeks ago, if you remember when the helicopter got shot down and, and the crisis increased. So Gary's son, who is in that same battalion or whatever the group it is, unit, he was stationed, he is stationed in Colorado, so unbeknown to him, he got his unit or parts of his unit is getting deployed to Afghanistan at the end of this month. So Gary took his family quickly, unannounced and unplanned, and went out there and going to spend some quality time with his family. So that's why he is missing at this meeting today. So we need to keep him in our prayers. Somebody move that we approve the agenda as published?
Chairman, I'd like to make a move to amend the agenda to also add an executive session right before item twenty-one to talk about litigation and then personnel.
Okay, you want to put it twenty-one?
Well, right before twenty-one, so I guess take twenty-one, turn it into twenty-one and then turn the adjournment into twenty-two.
Okay. So you want to put it just for adjournment? Okay. We, we have a motion to amend the published agenda with the exception or add executive session.
For litigation and personnel.
Litigation and personnel. Have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Second District One, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, so move. Next, under the court system, we have a resolution requesting acceptance of grants from the Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordination Physical Year for two thousand fifteen Resources Is the Honorable Arch McGarrett going to present to us? Yes, sir.
I like that procedure better, but I think it's somewhat self-explanatory, it's required by the policies and procedures to get approval for the acceptance of the grants from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council from the Office of the Governor. And if you have any questions, I will count on those who aid me in preparation for all this to answer if I can. Ongoing programs that we've been dealing with for quite some time, I think they're all delineated there is the Resource Court, which is also known as the Mental Health Court. That was how it was originally created, they decided to change the name somewhere along the way. The Adult Felony Court, and I believe that, item two, the DUI Court and the Juvenile Court are all set forth in that grants that we received from the Governor's office and have been to carry on these programs.
If no one has any questions, we have a resolution in the book, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners accepting the grant in the amount of one hundred and four thousand nine forty-six for the State of Georgia Office of Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. Somebody move in that direction.
So move.
Have a motion District Four.
Second.
Second from District Two. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, so move. Thank you, Hon.
And there's another one coming up, I can stay up here for that.
Yes, sir. So which one you're going to do now?
Would be the resolutions requesting authorization to use date funds to support the Resource Court for Physical Year two thousand fifteen.
So we're going to shift, shift over to Exhibit Five while you have the floor? Yeah, but date funds, you said date funds, right?
Yes, that's under subsection B.
Yeah, subsection B.
Drug, alcohol, treatment, and education funds.
Okay, so we got two, three, and four still remaining under court system.
Okay. Adult Felony Court is the drug court for the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council.
Okay, so who's going to present the Adult Felony Court?
Right, I don't know why, it's the Adult Drug, Felony Drug Court.
Okay. Do you have, help us out now, because when it says date, that, to me, that date unless it's criminal justice, it comes out of another pot. So you're going, you're going to do the Adult Felony Court?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, the resolution is for one hundred and forty-two thousand, I'm saying, got my glasses, five fifteen, from the State of Georgia Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council. There is a match for personnel funding, fifteen, eight thirty-five, isn't that, let me ask this for clarification, is that a continuation?
It's met with existing personnel.
It's used with existing personnel funds, so there's no additional funds coming out of budget, no additional budgetation, budget amendments necessary.
Anybody have any questions or comment? Not, we have a resolution in, published, the resolution of the Board of Commissioners accepting the grant for one hundred and forty-two thousand five fifteen. If somebody move in that direction. We have a motion from District One, second from District Five, any further discussion? If not, raise your right hand, so move. Next would be the DUI Court.
I know nothing about the DUI Court except it's run by a good friend of mine, Judge Blunt.
Good evening. I think, okay. We're asking for you to approve the use of the grant and matching funds in the same amount of money that we used last year of date. Our budget has remained the same.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? We have a resolution in the book. A motion by District Two for approval, thirty-two thousand six twenty-five from the State of Georgia. We have a second from District One, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, so move. Thank you. Juvenile Court.
Gentlemen, the Juvenile Court is seeking approval of receipt of grant funds from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council in the amount of sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and ten dollars to operate our juvenile mental health court, which will be starting its second year. We appreciate your assistance in this.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we have a resolution accepting the grant in the amount of sixty-seven thousand eight hundred and ten dollars from the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council.
So move.
So move. Have a motion District Four, second from District Five, further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, so move. Now we move down to B, resolution requesting authorization to use of date funds. Resource Court.
There is additional expenditure of fourteen thousand seven seventy-eight from drug abuse treatment and education funds to support the Henry County Resource Court along with necessary budget amendments to accommodate the distribution of those funds. I think it is important to look at one, two, and three in together since they're all asking for date funds. And I think the county's analysis as well as our own analysis indicates that we will not bump up against the cap that has been placed upon not letting that fund drop below the eight hundred thousand figure, whether you use our numbers or the county's numbers, it's not significantly different and would not exceed that. So we would, that, that, that minimum amount would be still there plus some.
So this is fourteen thousand seven seventy-eight expenditure?
Yes.
Okay, we have a, anybody have any questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book approving expenditure of fourteen thousand seven seventy-eight and it will not exceed the eight hundred thousand dollar threshold. If somebody move in that direction. We have a motion District One, second District Two, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Next, we have the Adult Felony Court.
It's the Adult Felony Drug Court. It's seventy-one thousand three thirty-six for the support of the Henry County Adult Felony Drug Court along with any necessary budget amendments to accommodate the distribution of those funds. This is the court run by Judge Omero. It's the, I really would like to spend a lot of time, but I know y'all got a long agenda. These courts that we're dealing with are the newest version of trying to get the most bang for our bucks as far as taking people off use of drugs and a revolving door with the court system as a result of drugs and then getting them into a productive life. So not only do you get them out of the cost of being in our, our jail for a certain period of time, being in the state prison for a certain period of time, they rehabilitate them back into a useful productive member of society, so they're actually producing revenue to the county and to the state, and therefore, it's a win-win, and this is the direction. We have almost thirty-five percent more drug courts in this state this year than we had last year, which means the state funding and federal funding is going to be spread a little bit more, smaller pieces of pie for everybody, but we're, we're going to maintain to do what we can with we have with using these date funds also, which is what that fund is designed for.
That's an amount of seventy-one thousand three thirty-six.
It's, yes, that's correct.
Okay, we have a resolution in the book, resolution of the Board of Commissioners approving expenditure to date funds for the purpose of supporting Henry County Adult Felony Drug Court. Anybody have any question, comment? We have a motion District Four, second from District Five, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, so move. Thank you.
And I'll introduce Judge Blunt again, who the DUI Court really does impact the county budget positively.
It does. We're asking for the same amount of date funds that we got last year, and I believe that figure's one hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, as I said a while ago. Our budget has remained the same in the last two years, we have not asked for any additional funds. If the Mr. Chairman remembers, last year, we were talking about this and the date funds coming in, and I projected that the date funds would come in and that the, the collections would be higher, and that has been, that has been fulfilled this year, it's been a substantial increase, and we're very glad to see that happen, because this is a statute that says specifically what these monies are to be used for, and it's collected from people who commit the crime. So it's a, it's really a good deal, and my court has got a ninety-two percent success rate at this point, was surprised.
One hundred and thirteen thousand?
Yes.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments or questions? If not, we have a resolution in the board, in the book, for approval expenditure of the date funds for the purpose of Henry County Misdemeanor Drug Accountability Court. If somebody move in that direction.
So move.
We have a motion District Two.
Second.
Second from District Five, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. That's it, gentlemen.
Thank you so much.
For your time and thank you for your service. Next, we have a resolution requesting approval of an agreement for guardian ad litem service for physical year two thousand fifteen, Exhibit Eight.
We are requesting the approval and agreement for the guardian ad litem fees. We represent dependent and deprived children and special needs adults for Henry County.
This is an amount of ten thousand, is that correct?
It's an additional ten thousand. The legislature has rewritten the juvenile code, and there's additional mandated duties and additional cases that we will be handling, and I had discussed this with Judge Bartels, and we discussed that it may be around eight children a month, which would be an additional eight hundred dollars a month that we're asking for.
Okay. We have a resolution in the book to approve the agreement with Henry County Guardian Advocate LLC for guardian ad litem service. Any questions, comments?
Move to approve.
Have a motion in, from District Two to approve.
Second.
Second from District One, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public Safety, resolution request authorization to use seized and asset forfeiture funds for purchase electronic control, Major Goen.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Board of Commissioners. This request is to request authorization to use one hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-two cents in narcotic seized funds for the purchase of one hundred and twenty TASER electronic control devices and the equipment required to train and to carry them. Henry County Police Department has used a different brand of electronic control devices in the past, in two thousand nine, called Carbon Arms. In the fall of two thousand thirteen, we began experiencing problems with these not operating correctly or not operating at all. What we did is we collected up all the devices so they weren't out in the field, and we started coordinating with the company to try to get replacements for them. During the course of implementation of these replacements of Carbon Arms devices, we learned Carbon Arms was going out of business. Further research revealed that Carbon Arms had engaged in, was engaged in litigation with another electronic control device company named TASER International. As part of this legal settlement, Carbon Arms could no longer sell their product or support their product, and in turn, the owners of Carbon Arms devices could no longer use them or resell them. Due to this, we're requesting to replace all of these items with an authorized product, which is a TASER International product, and they are sole source provider at this point, and therefore would be the company we would be requesting to make the purchase from.
Anybody have any questions or comment?
Yes, sir.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, usually when you have class action lawsuits or patent infringement or something, because that's what that sounds like to me.
Yes, sir.
Did TASER make any good faith efforts to try to grab all those clients by giving coupons or trade-in or anything like that?
They did, but they were very restrictive in what they would do. They would give you some of the trade-in value, but it was only if you were going to oblige yourself to buy a certain amount or to go along with their extended warranty, which was a very large amount of money.
And then last one, what do y'all have against left-handed holsters?
We don't have anything against left-handed holsters.
I'm left-handed, so I noticed there's a hundred and ten right-handed holsters and ten left-handed holsters, so.
Yes, sir.
I thought that was kind of interesting.
We just don't have a lot of them.
Any other question? Not, have a resolution in the book, the Board of Commissioners authorizing expenditure of one hundred and fifty thousand, three hundred and fifty from the Henry County Police Department seized funds and asset forfeits account for the purchase of electronic control devices and equipment.
Move to approve.
Have a motion from District Two.
Second.
Second from District Five, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, so move.
Thank you all very much.
Yes, you got the next one, don't you? Who has the next one? Oh, thank you, Chief.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for having us this evening. Today, we're requesting approval to renew our training software, Target Safety Solutions. As you know, we're required to do training yearly, state mandate for both fire and EMS. This Target Solutions software lets us do that online and our training modules for record keeping purposes. This is a yearly contract, sole source, for the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred and ninety-five to come out of next year's budget, starting July first.
Anybody have any questions or comment? Not, have a resolution in the book, the Board of Commissioners requesting authorization to renew the annual user license and subscription fee for Target Solution Learning Management System in the amount of twenty thousand eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. Have a motion District One to approve, second from District Two, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Purchasing, resolution request approval of a purchase of a video server and system controller, Rod Gray. Good evening.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. As stated, this is a request to purchase a video server and system controller from Latronics at a cost of sixteen thousand seven hundred and ninety-three dollars. This is unique. We put this out for sealed bid twice, no one responded, so finally, we went directly to the manufacturer, and they will sell it to us. I've never had so much difficulty buying something that exists, but the, the recommendation is to purchase this from the manufacturer. I can't call it a sole source, there are other resellers, but this is the only person that's willing to sell it to us. So that is the recommendation.
Anybody got any questions? Not, we have a resolution in the book requesting approval to purchase an Ultra Nexus Video Server and System Controller in the amount of sixteen thousand seven ninety-three.
I'm going to approve.
Have a motion District Two.
Second.
Second District Four, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, so Next, have a resolution request approval to declare certain items and equipment as purpose and authorization to dispose of said items. Rod?
Yes, sir. We have attached a list of items that we are requesting to sell through the online format on govdeals.com. The recommendation is to authorize the purchasing director to sell those items, and I don't see this specifically listed, if I could request an amendment, whatever items do not sell to allow us to dispose of them, because if no one's willing to buy them, they have no value to the count anymore. Most of the stuff will sell, some things won't.
Okay, we have a list, we have a resolution, anybody have any questions or comment? Yes, sir.
You have a question, Rod, is how would the, do we put anything on our website that lets the public know where this, you know, how to register to bid on these items?
Yes, sir. On the front page of the county website, we have a link to govdeals.com, so that anytime anyone wants to check and see any surplus items we may have for sale at that time, from the front page of the web, of the website, they can click on that and it takes them right there, and the, the website walks them through how to register.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions? Not, we have a resolution in the book identifying and authorizing to dispose of surplus items and equipment.
So move.
Have a motion District Four.
Second.
Second District Five, any further discussion? If none, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign. Thank you. Human Resources, resolution request authorization to purchase two workstations.
I'll take this one too, sir.
Is that going to be you two?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The recommendation is to purchase these, these workstations from Impact Office Interiors. This purchase will be made under a state contract in the amount of eighteen thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Anybody have any questions? Not, we have a resolution in the book pertaining to the workstations for human resources in the amount of eighteen thousand two hundred and ninety-five dollars and sixty-nine cents, if somebody would move to approve. Have a motion District One.
Second.
Second from District Two. Any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Resolution request approval of an annual maintenance for the jail door lock system for the Sheriff's Department. Mr. Floyd, welcome.
Good evening, Chairman. This resolution is to request approval, annual maintenance agreement for the jail lock system at the Sheriff's Department. Any questions?
Anybody got any questions or comment? If not, we have a resolution in the book to recommend renewal of Southwest Communication Jail Door Lock Maintenance in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars. We have a motion from District Two to approve it.
Second.
Have a second from District Four, any further discussion? If not, raise your right hand if you're in favor of it, same sign if you oppose. Thank you so much. Next, we have a resolution request approval of an annual maintenance for the Record Management System for the Sheriff's Department.
Yes, sir, this is Police Central Software. This is the software that automates common law enforcement tasks for the Sheriff's Department. This is, again, the annual maintenance agreement for forty thousand five hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book to recommend renewal of a Police Central Software Maintenance in the amount of forty thousand five eighty-eight. If somebody would move in that direction.
So move.
Have a motion from District Five.
Second.
Second District Four, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign. Thank you. Resolution request approval of an annual maintenance for the AS four hundred system.
This is the systems that run basically all the county software, CAD system, nine-one-one, and ERP system, and our disaster recovery system. This is an annual maintenance agreement to cover all three systems for eighty-three thousand two hundred and forty-five dollars.
Anybody have any questions? Reading here, administrative police AS four hundred would be forty-two thousand two forty-two, and then the CAD nine-eleven AS four hundred and disaster would be forty-one oh oh three.
Yes.
That's where you get to eighty-three thousand two forty-five.
Correct, yes.
We have a resolution in the book to award a renewal of an annual maintenance for three AS four hundred systems, and send the amount of eighty-three thousand two forty-five, if somebody would move in that direction.
So move.
We have a motion District One.
Second.
Second from District Two, any further discussion, all in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Not, in favor of it, raise your right hand. Resolution request approval of an annual maintenance for the Sun Guard Software.
And this is the annual maintenance agreement for all the software that runs on all these systems, ERP, CAD, crimes, and the public safety applications. This is a total of ninety thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and two cents.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book recommending renewal of an annual maintenance for Sun Guard Administrative and Public Safety Software in the amount of ninety thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars and two cents, if somebody would move in that direction.
Move to approve.
Have a motion District Two.
Second.
Second District Four, any further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Next, SPOLOSH, we have a resolution request authorization to use the SPOLOSH four funds to purchase fifteen new twenty-fourteen Dodge Chargers on behalf of the Police Department, and Ron Burke-Halter, Capital Project, is the presenter. Good evening.
Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. In November twenty thirteen, the voters of Henry County approved the SPOLOSH four referendum, which included the purchase of thirty new police patrol vehicles for the Henry County Police Department. The Henry County SPOLOSH Department is requesting authorization to purchase fifteen of the thirty new patrol vehicles on behalf of the Henry County Police Department for the calendar year two thousand fourteen. The remaining fifteen are budgeted in calendar year two thousand fifteen. These vehicles will replace older model vehicles which have high mileage and are in constant need of repair. The SPOLOSH Department will utilize the state contract, which expires eight thirty-one two thousand fourteen, to purchase the fifteen new two thousand fourteen Dodge Chargers from Akins Ford Dodge Jeep Chrysler. The base price per vehicle is twenty-two thousand five hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety cent. The contract has a delivery charge of fifty dollars per vehicle. The Police Department is requesting the optional items, a full-size spare tire, driver-sized spot lamp, LED spot lamp bulb, and inoperable rear lock window handle. With the addition of these options, the cost per vehicle is twenty-three thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-eight cents.
Any questions?
County-wide budget from SPOLOSH four?
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Do we have this revenue in the county-wide budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? If not, we have a resolution in the book for the Board of Commissioners authorizing the SPOLOSH Department to purchase fifteen new twenty-fourteen Dodge Chargers using SPOLOSH four funds in the amount of three hundred and forty-six seven seven hundred and fifteen dollars and seventy cents, if somebody would move in that direction.
So move.
Have a motion District Five.
Second.
Second District Four, any further discussion? About what?
No, sir, there is none.
Do these have HEMIs?
No, sir, there are no HEMIs.
All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand, all opposed, same sign.
I was laughing about the HEMI.
Have the inside joke about the HEMIs.
Well, anybody who watches the history of the DOC, that was a good one.
Next, we have a resolution request approval of a budget amendment for the Fairview Road Widening Project. Mr. Romero.
Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman and our board members. Fairview Road Widening is designated SPOLOSH three, Transportation Improvement Project, currently under construction. A budget amendment in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-one cents is needed for pending roadway condemnations on the Fairview Road Widening Project. One hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-one cents is available in the following SPOLOSH three project accounts. Thirty-five thousand five hundred fourteen dollars and eighty-seven cents is available in the Anvil Block Road Widening Project, leaving a balance of zero on, in this account. There's seventy-five thousand three hundred and sixty-eight, sixty-eight dollars and four cents available in the Hemp Hill Road at Stairway one thirty-eight project, which is a shared project between District Four and District Five. District Five available portion of Hemp Hill and one thirty-eight is seventy-five thousand three hundred and sixty-four dollars and four cents, which leaves District Five a balance of zero. District Four has a balance of five hundred seventy-nine thousand nine hundred and seventy-four dollars and forty cents. SPOLOSH staff recommends approval of a budget amendment in the amount of one hundred and ten thousand eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and ninety-one cents for pending roadway condemnations on the Fairview Road Widening Project.
I only have one question, all this is in SPOLOSH three, correct?
That's correct.
That no other money is involved in this but SPOLOSH three?
That's correct, all three.
Anybody else have any questions or comment? Yes, sir.
I'm in, because, I'm sorry, Bruce, did you?
I just wanted to commend Rocky for finding me a little revenue, I was getting a little concerned, so thanks so much.
Yes, sir, District Four.
Rocky, just, just for the record, for those that are watching, and anyone that may be in District Four in the room at this time, we have two point four million and change in SPOLOSH four, plus the half a million plus or minus that we have today for that intersection improvement. After the meeting that we had on State Route twenty in East Lake, it seemed that State DOT was very interested in helping us anywhere we could do a roundabout. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So we have more than enough based on the So, we have more than enough based on the amount of money that we found that we feel like it's gonna cost to do the roundabout at State Route twenty. There would actually be some funding left over from Splosh Four Project on that. Just wanna make sure that those that are listening know that, you know, while some monies are being transferred, at the time that money was put in, it was District Five. It's split between District Five and District Four. At this time, we put more than enough funds into carry us into a roundabout. Actually, we got enough probably to do a full intersection improvement. But we're gonna have a lot more success going for the roundabout, correct?
That's correct, and now with the new, new lines, that's why it's all in District Four. Uh, that's why it's in Splosh Four as a District Four, and it's not a shared project.
I just wanted to be sure because I've had some conversations, some have asked me, why would we move something from a three project to that, but we've got, we still have over a half a million in three, and we've also got two-point-four and change. So we have more than enough funding to do a roundabout at that intersection, which we severely need to do something there. I yield the floor, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? If not, we have a resolution in the book, Splosh Resolution to Approve a Budget Amendment Transferring Funds from Anvil Block Road Widening and Hemp Hill Road at SR one thirty-eight to Fairview Road Widening in amount of one hundred and ten thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight ninety-one cents.
So moved.
Anybody moving that direction? Have a motion from District Five.
Say.
Have a second from District Four, any further discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. If no, same sign. Thank you. Resolution request approval of amendment, Resolution fourteen eighty-four and fourteen forty-four regarding the East Lake Road, uh, at SR twenty. Mr. Romero.
Yes, Chairman. Resolution number fourteen eighty-four was approved by the Board on April fifteenth of this year, and it has been identified to expedite the intersection improvements of East Lake Road at Stairway twenty due to numerous traffic accidents at this intersection. East Lake Road at Stairway twenty is a shared project between District Three and District Four with a budget of one million seven, or eight hundred and fifty thousand per district. Revised Splosh Four Project War Sheet for District Three and District Four show an additional four hundred thousand dollars, or two hundred thousand per district, will be used for the design and roadway of acquisition of this project. It is projected that there will be a Splosh Four collection excess of over eight hundred thousand dollars by the end of this year, December of twenty fourteen. Therefore, there's no need to reduce the budgets of any previous approved projects for year twenty, twenty fourteen. Resolution twenty fourteen was also approved by the Board on February eleventh of this year. Due to the request to move East Lake up, East Lake at Stairway twenty up from year twenty fifteen to twenty fourteen, Resolution twenty fourteen forty-four will need to be amended as well to reflect the changes for year twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen, and twenty sixteen to the Splosh Four District Three Project War Sheet and also the, this Splosh Four District Four Project War Sheets. Splosh staff recommends approval to move East Lake Road at Stairway twenty from Splosh Four Priority One Projects from calendar year twenty fifteen to Splosh Four Priority One Projects for calendar year twenty fourteen, and recommends approval to amend Resolutions fourteen dash eighty-four and Resolution fourteen dash forty-four.
Anybody have any questions or comment? District Four?
Have a comment. This is, this, there again, this is the State Route twenty thing that we met with DOT, with State DOT, our, two of our representatives, and Mr. Barnum and myself. This is the one that we're gonna move net. Can you tell me when we're gonna have the four-way stop?
It's supposed to be by the end of next week.
Okay, so.
There is four weeks from where we met, and we met back last May.
That's great, so that we have everybody getting used to the four-way stop before school starts, so.
Four-way stop, correct.
I just wanted to clarify the four-way stop issue. I yield the floor, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? Yes, sir.
I just wanted, before we vote on this issue, I was, I wanted to commend the staff as well as, I see some, some committee members from the Splosh Four Roundabouts. In Henry County, we don't have a lot of them. I mean, it's, it's not one of those things, but I know GDOT has really been pushing them. I was up at Emery Area all this week for a camp for my daughter, and they have roundabouts everywhere up there. I think these things are safe, they're, they're great, and the way that the traffic never stops, it just keeps moving, so I think this is something that the whole county is really gonna appreciate once these things start coming in. So I wanted to thank, you know, staff for talking to GDOT even before, as we were planning this Splosh Four, the, the committee put these in there. It's just we're gonna accelerate some of them, but they're go, they're gonna be much needed and appreciated because they're better than a four-way stop, for sure.
Yes, sir.
I also want to commend Rocky, commend you for your work on, on the roundabouts. I just have one issue. I think we need to have some discussions with GDOT with regards to maintaining the roundabouts, the one up in Fairview. It gets kinda messy, and we're a little, we're a little lax in terms of keeping it maintained. So if there's any way we can step that up a little bit, that would be great.
We'll, we'll, we'll reach to GDOT and see what we can do to maintain, because yes, as you know, we work on the one fifty-five at Fairview Roundabout, and it's a, it's a pretty good, pretty good-sized roundabout, and it's just grass. So, yes, sir, we'll, we'll talk to them and see what we can do to, to enhance, enhance the.
Same with the median, same with the medians throughout the county as well.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else have any questions or comment? If not, we have a resolution in the book, Henry County Board of Commissioners to amend Resolution number fourteen dash eighty-four, Resolutions to Commence Splosh Four Priority One Projects for Calendar Year twenty fourteen, and Resolution number fourteen dash forty-four, Resolution Prioritizing Splosh Four Project. Somebody moving in that direction? Have a motion District Four.
Second.
Second District Five, any further discussion? All raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, we have a resolution warning a bid for design services for the intersection improvement East Lake Road at twenty.
Yes, this is the invitation to bid. After, just like Commissioner Bowman mentioned before, we had several meetings that include GDOT and state representatives, and we, there was a need to identify, a need to expedite this project due to the numerous traffic accidents during the school year that just ended. An invitation for bid for design services for the intersection improvements of East Lake at Stairway twenty was solicited through the Purchasing Department, and nine design services bids were received and reviewed. Per Finance Department, funding for these design services is available in the budget under Splosh Four Priority One Projects for Calendar Year twenty fourteen. Staff recommends awarding the bid designed for design services to McGee Partners Incorporated in the amount of sixty-eight thousand, eight hundred dollars for the intersection improvement of East Lake at Stairway twenty. And I also would like to mention that we actually put a condition on, on this design to be done in three months. So I just wanna make sure that the public knows that we're trying to do, expedite this as, as much as we can, and we put that in the, in the, in the bid for the engineer to design this within ninety days. That's just their time, that does not include GDOT review, because it's, it's on a state route, and a county review, so the main design will be done in, in ninety days.
Do you have a resolution? Who has that? Do you have it? Do you have a question or comment?
Yeah, well, just another comment. This, when we met with GDOT, the, the, the reaction was that if we got these in very quickly, they would turn them around very quickly, that we basically had a permit in our hands provided we got this to them very quickly, so. There again, commend Rocky and his staff for making that happen quick and making sure it's in the bid. We got a ninety-day deal on it, and we still got a, looks like a great number on it compared to the other six bidders, so.
Right.
I appreciate all the hard work, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments? Do we have a resolution?
Yes.
It's missing out of my book. Could you bring me yours up here, please?
Yes, sir.
That's it. Got you. Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? If not, we have a resolution, Splosh Resolution to Award a Bid for Design Services for the Intersection Improvements of East Lake Road and twenty.
So moved.
Have a motion District Four?
Say.
Second District One, any, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Next, I have a resolution request approval of a budget amendment regarding East Lake Road Phase Two Project. Rocky.
Yes, Chairman. East Lake Road Phase Two is a designated Splosh Three Project that was completed in July twenty-ten. The four-lane East Lake Road Phase Two Project ended at the entrance of Union Grove High School. A logical termini for the project should have been at the end of the Union Grove Middle School to provide better traffic congestion reliefs. Since the completion of East Lake Two, Phase Two, and Eagles Landing Parkway, there has been an increase of volume of traffic at the school located on East Lake Road. Adding a turn lane, a left-turn lane to Union Grove Middle School will provide the necessary traffic relief. The original plans for East Lake Road Phase Two also included a median opening at Crown Corners Road, and there, and where the median opening was removed due to public input. There's a need to add a left-turn near Crown Corners Road to provide better residential commercial access, therefore reducing the need to make U-turns at a major state highway intersection. A budget amendment in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand is needed to add both turn lanes on East Lake Road. The four hundred and fifty thousand dollars is available in the Splosh Three Rock Quarry Road Widening Project. Staff recommends approval of a budget amendment in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand to add both turn lanes on East Lake Road.
Anybody have any questions or comment? If not, we have a resolution in the book to approve an amendment to East Lake Road Phase Two, Splosh Three, and budget amendment transferring funds from Rock Quarry Road Widening Splosh Three to East Lake Road Phase Two.
So moved.
Have a motion District Four?
Say.
Second District Five, any further discussion? All in favor, lift your right hand. Same, same sign for negative. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next, Building Department, we have a public hearing and amendment to the ULDC regarding minimum roof pitch for residential patio covers. Derek, good evening.
Good evening. Chairman and Board, the request before you this evening is to amend the Unified Land Development Code regarding minimum roof pitch for residential patio covers. The ULDC requires a minimum roof pitch of four and twelve in zoning districts RA, R1 through R5, and a minimum roof pitch of five and twelve in the Bruton Smith Overlay District. Staff recommends to exempt patio covers from this minimum roof pitch requirement for the, the reasons that roof pitch is on existing construction, the geometry can conflict with other elements such as illustrated in Illustration A, where patio cover has a four and twelve roof pitch and it intersects with the second-story windows. Illustration B has a roof pitch of two and twelve and clears the second-story windows. This is a common problem in, in, within the Building Department. Staff recommends exemption and the addition of a definition to define patio covers as an attached structure with open screened or glazed walls, which is used only for recreational outdoor living purposes associated with the dwelling unit, and not as carports, garages, storage rooms, or habitable rooms. The proposed modification was approved by the Zoning Advisory Board on, on May eighth.
Anybody have any comments from the Board? If not, I will open the floor up for public comments. This is a public hearing. If anybody'd like to speak for or against or make any comments, please come to the podium and state your name and address for records, please. Not seeing any? We have a resolution in the book to amend the Unified Land Development Code regarding minimum roof pitch for residential patio covers. Has just described, if somebody would consider that.
So moved.
Have a motion District Four?
Say.
Have a second District Two, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you.
Next, we have a public hearing for the purpose of receiving comments and adoption of Section four-zero-two-point-o-two Fairview Road Overlay District in the ULDC. Ms. Matthews. I will announce too that you are now the Assistant County Manager.
Good evening Chair and Board members. The item before you this evening has been a long time coming, and it's certainly something that we're excited to roll out to the Board. As you all are aware, last June, the Board elected to award a contract to the collaborative firm to develop design guidelines and create an overlay district for the Fairview Road corridor. As you all are aware, we're trying to create design guidelines and stipulations so that when developments are developed along that corridor, individuals know what the expectations are. So in August of last year, the planning staff, in collaboration with the collaborative firm and the residents and property owners within the Fairview Community kicked off what we call the Fairview Road Overlay District. We had a lot of community meetings, we had a steering committee that was willing and ready to offer all of their input and support to develop this overlay district, and even the District Commissioner attended the steering committee meetings to just help guide the process and to hear from his constituents on what they envisioned for the Fairview area. I certainly don't wanna speak a lot because we do have the consultant firm here that wants to present, that would like to present to you all their findings as a result of what we heard from the citizens and as a result of what we heard from the steering committee. I do want you all to know that this is a public hearing, and if the Board does elect to adopt and approve the overlay district, it will then become the master plan for this corridor. So I'll be quiet for a minute, and if you have any questions for me, I'll be more than happy to answer, but if not, at this time, I would like to present to you all the consultants from the collaborative firm. I think we have Michael Hightower, and then we have Alex that will be presenting as well.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, we'll be very brief tonight. Thank you for, Michael Hightower of the collaborative firm, thank you for allowing us to come tonight, and we would respectfully ask your consideration and approval for this matter. As Ms. Matthews, I'm gonna thank her and her staff, they have been extremely helpful along with the District Commissioners, we've gone through this process with, with a lot of public, public outreach. And as Ms. Matthews indicated, I think this process is an attempt to, of course, manage and guide future development along that corridor as we look at the significant enhancements that you've invested in the public infrastructure, as well as the future development of the Fairview area. So at this time, Alex Fike-Waslock will walk us through very briefly this process, and certainly I wanna, again, thank members of the community for their involvement and, and very candid input. Alex.
Thank you. Good evening, Chairman, Commissioners. I just wanted to spend a couple moments here giving an overview, an overview of the overlay, and I'm sure all the Commissioners are, are very aware of what an overlay is, but I wanted to make sure that everyone in the audience was as well. Essentially, an overlay is a zoning district that, that works on top of an existing zoning district, and it can include a number of properties that are within, that have different underlying zoning, but all of them are subject to the additional rules that are on the overlay. So I just wanted to get that out, so everyone understood that. And this animation just illustrates that. So, as, again, as the Commissioners are aware, but maybe not everyone in, in the audience is aware, we were, the, the county employed us to, to create an overlay for Fairview because some of the, this, well, the Splosh, obviously, that was coming through, means that there's likely to be some new development in the area. There's the Fairview Medical Center, which I'm sure you're familiar with as well, which kinda sets a new tone for the area. And there was certainly some, a lot of community support for that, and this was the sort of thing that can encourage quality development. So, as Sherry alluded to, there was a lot of public outreach that was involved with this. There was a Facebook page, we put out messaging through the county website, we've had a visual preference survey, and, and I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. And we had quite a number of meetings. I did wanna take a moment to thank every, every person who came out for the steering committee meetings. There were many, and some of them were long, and so we greatly appreciate their contribution to this process. I believe we had five total steering committee meetings, the dates are listed there, a public meeting and a design workshop. So, the visual preference survey I mentioned in the last slide, that essentially is, is asking questions through pictures, and basically, we present a series of slides to the public and basically ask them to rate them, whether they love them or hate them, and through sort of an analysis of that, we kind of understand what the community is looking for without necessarily just asking. We do a little bit of that, too. In the design workshop, what we did was basically sit down with some large format maps, members of the community, the steering committee, and the Commissioner, actually, was there, and some, several staff members, and basically talk over some of the results that we'd gotten early on in the process, some of the things that were part of the steering committee meetings, and try and get an meetings, and try and get an idea from community members what their input was. And then trying to, then having them present to the rest of the groups so that sort of everyone under, was hearing what was going on in these other groups. Now, as a result of this, basically, we came up with sort of a three-tiered area with, which you can see on this map here. Hopefully, everyone in the audience can see that. Essentially, what we have is a town center area, which is this red area that's pretty much along Fairview Road between more or less Flakes Mill and, and the Nidus Development. There is this sort of orange color here, here, and here. That's the more suburban character. It's, it's not quite as intense as that town center. And then we have this residential area, these yellow areas that I'm pointing out now. Those are sort of, those are the residential, largely residential, no real commercial use in there. And this was to address some of the, the different concerns, well, visions, I should say, for the different areas that, that came out of the, the design workshop, that came out of the steering committee meetings, et cetera. And this slide essentially spells out what I just described. Other elements of the overlay, and I, I don't want it to drill down too far because I know there's a lot on the agenda, but I just want to touch some of the, the main points here. There's enhanced landscaping requirements, a number of architectural detailing requirements, everything from kind of breaking it down to a more human scale to windows requiring high-end materials. So, think about durable, durable materials like stone, brick, stucco, hardy plank, and restricting some of the nuisance uses that, that came up in, in some of the uses, including nightclub, pawn shops, tire shops, vehicle body shops, those sorts of things. In summary, essentially, what this brings to the county is a series of higher standards for development, includes some of those items that I talked about, building materials, make sure that you've got an orientation that is advantageous, creates more of that town center feel, and has the sort of businesses that would thrive in that area. And then also builds on some of the initiatives about creating healthy places, again, with the Fairview Medical Center and some of the trails that are coming in, and it builds on the future development plan. So, with that, that's all I have to say.
Anybody have any questions? Comment?
Yeah, I, I want to say thank you to everybody who participated in the meetings, my steering committee, the community. I think this is going to be great for, for the Fairview area. I think it's going to be great for the county because we're going to set standards and we're going to attract the type of businesses that are going to help increase property values in our particular area. So, I just want to say thank you to everybody and want to get this thing passed.
Anybody else have any comments? This is, requires a public hearing, so at this time here, I would open the floor up for people that had any comments, pro, con, or just regular comments. And I'm going to limit the time for the entire 15, 15 minutes. So, if you would, state your name and address for the records, please.
My name is Dennis Goss at 870 Clark Drive, Ellinwood. There's two issues here. I'm, I'm speaking on behalf of Coparts and my sister, Mary Ann Kenny. Excuse me. This piece of property that's in Rowan Road, where it touches Fairview, comes over to Clark, that whole 40 acre tract right there, they have cut her out of this, they just put that one piece different than the rest of the 40 acres. And she would just like to know why they, they did that on that one particular piece. And the other piece is the Copart piece that's right here on the back. See that? That is an M2 zoning presently at this time. Coparts paid 4.5 million for that piece of property to use it as a facility that they're using it for. And then in the future, if they sell this property or something, is it going to lose that M2 zoning? And, you know, if they ever want to expand or, or something, this is kind of tying their hands where they can't do nothing. Right now, they got an M2 zoning that was given to them in the early 80s with no restrictions on it. And now is this going to hinder them in the future from doing anything? And I want to maybe to elate to y'all, too, that they're paying 72,000 with their property taxes and they ain't sending one of these cars to school on that 77 acre tract. So, that's where we're at with that. Y'all need to...
Okay. We have a comment, a question from District Four?
I have a question, but I need it for Sherri, actually. But she's sitting down, so I can't ask it.
So, can I sit down now?
Yes, sir. So, you asked me a question? I, I got you. We have, we have, we have a consultation.
I want to ask her a question, but she's busy. Yeah.
Yeah. She's getting prepared to answer your question.
Thank you.
No problem.
In that, I mean, I like the overlay, but, but I'm concerned about when we had an M1 or M2, then Dennis has left the podium. So, are we drawing them out of their zoning? I mean, what's the deal with that? Because they were there first.
You're absolutely correct. The properties that are currently zoned, commercial, industrial, will remain commercial and industrial until such time that those property owners look to redevelop their property, which is really the whole purpose of creating an overlay district. Right now, that property is zoned M2. But looking at the future land use map, that property is designated future as low density residential. So, I think the intent was allow them to continue operating or utilizing that property under the M2 designation, but in the near future, if that property were to be redeveloped, they would not be able to redevelop it as an industrial tract.
So, they would have to sell it in order for it to go back to residential? What would that do as far as, like, I'm just, I'm thinking, I, you know, I've got a piece of property that's M1 or M2, and I paid the price for that M1 or M2. And now I want to sell that piece of property, but now I got to sell it as residential when I paid, you know, an M2 pricing for it. I, I'm a little concerned with it. I'm not against the overlay, but there are some things that just, that I have, you know, I'm, I'm trying to think, what if I own that land? I, I don't even know, I don't know the lady that owns the land, but what if I own the land? And then I've had the land for, I don't know how many years they've had it, five years, four years, whatever that number is, six years. Well, and then now the county is going to make something that's going to preclude me from being able to sell it as an M zoning by us drawing them out. I, I, I don't know that I can, I don't know that I could support that because at the end of the day, you've taken my right to get my due process as far as what it's worth on an M zoning. It, it's the same thing that we've run into before when, when, you know, somebody wants to take a commercial zoning and turn it into a multifamily. We had that recently. And we said, you know, we don't have that much commercial, so. But this is a little bit different in that this, this person owns it and bought it for that. How, how can we take that away from them and say, okay, when you get ready to sell it, it's going to be residential? I got a problem with that.
How do we do that?
That, that's certainly the issue, but it happens whenever you create an overlay district. The, the thing about this property is right now, if we take the overlay off, the property future designation is low density residential. And that was based on the adoption of the Floom in 2009. What the consultants did, what staff did, is we did look at those properties that were on our current zoning map and made a determination if industrial was appropriate. What we didn't do is go back and say, okay, if your property's zoned M2, now the future land use map has you as low density residential, and now you have to rezone your property back. We have allowed them to continue utilizing that property for those purposes. Now, the overlay does have an opt-out. If a property owner does not want to be a part of the overlay district, they can certainly petition to the Board to be removed from the overlay district. So, there is a process if, if this individual property owner does not want to be included. But that process would require approval from you all to amend that. What we were trying to do is keep with the future land use map that was adopted and approved by the Board. So, the consultants didn't really go in and change any land use classifications. We just literally took what we already had and created standards based on what was already adopted by the Board. But I hear you loud and clear, I understand that while we do have a property here that is currently zoned M2, you're absolutely correct. If Copart were to go away, then the only use that would be allowed would be a residential use.
There, there and I would have an issue, and I would think that there, you know, obviously there's certain attorneys that would, that would make a pretty good case for how you just took that away from them. I, I'm, I'm, like I said, I'm okay with a large majority. I, I'm going to have an issue with taking that ability for that person that purchased it even before we did everything and, and obviously because we allowed that use.
And I think the challenge we have is a lot of parcels, like the Copart parcel, was zoned some years back. I mean, I think 88, maybe, maybe, maybe early 80s. So, what you have is a lot of zonings that may exist where development was not there. Or maybe development was there, but development has kind of cushioned into it. So, what we've tried to do is go back and reevaluate, is it really appropriate to have industrial there? Certainly not trying to run this business away, certainly not telling Copart that they can't continue operating. But what we are saying is that the standard going forward will be that this parcel will be developed as a residential piece.
So, anything that Coparts would want to do to that piece of property, would they not, would that, what would they be allowed? What would their use be? Would they be allowed to put another drive in? Would they be allowed to do? I mean, I, I don't even know that that even makes any sense at the end of the day because we're going to take that away from them. But I don't know if anybody else is here that has an issue with it being taken away. We are hearing from Coparts that, you know, does have an issue with it. So, therein, I, I'm going to have, I'm going to have a problem supporting something that takes that ability for them to have it away from them. So, anyway, I appreciate it. I yield the floor, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or comment?
The current land use plan, if Copart decided to sell that property, would convert back to residential anyway?
No, sir. Under the current land use map, the property is designated for low density residential. If the overlay were not in place, Copart would be allowed to sell the property under the M2 zoning designation and develop it. Once the overlay goes into play, then if they were to sell the property, the only development that could happen if Copart goes away would be residential.
Chair, just one more comment.
Yes, sir.
So, if Coparts decided to sell it, just a scenario, and some small manufacturing type business that would use an M zoning were to come in, they wouldn't be allowed to come in there and put a business there?
If they do not submit a development plan, if it, if there were a small manufacturing business that were able to come in and utilize the property based on what's on the ground today, then they would be able to do that. But the development plan is what triggers them having to meet the new requirements.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other comments, question? If not, I'm going to open the floor back up to a public hearing. Anybody that would like to be heard, I'm going to start the clock again.
So, can we, that's the piece of property there. But can this be changed to show in this overlay where this can be industrial, can stay industrial at its current zone?
You know, I'll be honest with you. I, I really don't think that this area is appropriate for M1, M2 zoning. I would be okay with a commercial designation, but not, not M1 or M2. But we'll let Chairman open it up for a public comment and see where we go from there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to open the floor back up to public comments. State your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Deborah Grant, 120 Acorn Drive, McDonnell, Georgia. I was raised and born in the Fairview area. I am all for progress. I am all for beautiful aesthetics, making the neighborhood gorgeous to attract new commercial properties. I have been to several of these meetings, but I do not recall ever hearing that this area would only encompass from Danner Drive to Flakes Mill Road. Every meeting that I have attended, and I have not been at all of them, I will admit, but every meeting I have attended has spoken from Anvil Block Road down to near the McDonald's area, maybe to Panola Road, then it was moved up maybe to East Atlanta Road. So, I'm wondering, is there something I have missed at a meeting that now all of these homeowners from Rowan Road up to Anvil Block cannot progress and sell their properties as they might could do before an overlay comes in? That would put limitations on these people that have paid property taxes, maybe 40, 50, 60 years in this area. Now, are we limiting it from Danner Drive to Flakes Mill, or am I misunderstanding something?
The, the actual vicinity of the overlay begins at Anvil Block Road and ends at Church Road. So, it should still include those parcels. The boundaries have not changed from what was previously discussed. And I've put on the overhead, the actual boundary area. So, it includes all of those parcels that are highlighted on the overhead.
Well, there was something written in the copies tonight that said it would promote fundamentally the area from Danner Drive to Flakes Mill. And I just had not heard that before, and I thought that would be odd that the public had not heard that message. And I also think it very strange that you take a 40 acre tract, and I've been in real estate for 22 years, you take a 40 acre tract and you take one parcel on a corner. Most everything that you would go to would go to the middle of a road, the middle of a creek, the center of a traffic light, an intersection. And I guess I, maybe as just a neighbor, have a question is, why would one parcel be taken out of a 40 acre tract and not even go to the road, much less where the county has, hopefully has proposed new signals for traffic intersections? I guess I don't understand that either.
And, and a lot of the recommendations as far as how the character areas were identified was based on the design charrette that we had. And when the citizens came out, what we asked them to do was to take pictures and actually place those pictures where you envisioned development in that area. Certainly, I don't think that there is an issue with that one tract of land being shown as red, because I do agree with you, it probably logically makes more sense to capture that one parcel. I certainly don't want to speak for the Commissioner, but I don't think that that will be an issue. Under the orange and the red, they still do allow and promote commercial development, so it would not prohibit it, but certainly that shouldn't be an issue to get that changed.
Okay. Those were just the questions. Thank you. Thank you.
And Sherri, that, that is something that I would like to see amended this evening and have that one piece added back into the red section.
Anybody like to be heard?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. My name is Norville Broome. I live at 123 Celtic Court in Ellinwood, Georgia. I am a four-year resident of Henry County, and I was on the steering committee for this overlay. The, there was plenty of discussion, not only with the public, but also within the committee of the boundaries of the overlay district. It was my understanding that the zoning, underlying zoning was never going to be, was not going to be changed by this overlay plan. It was only during redevelopment of the land for another purpose, meaning that you would have to apply for a different kind of zoning permit for that land. And the buildings, the structures, the landscape, the signage, et cetera, was going to be governed by the, by the overlay plan. So, I was quite surprised to hear tonight that people weren't unaware of the boundaries because there was a lot of public discussion about that and/or the zoning. Thank you very much.
Anybody else need to be heard? I'm going to close the public hearing portion of it. But any of the Commissioners like to make a comment or...
I want to ask a question.
Yes, sir.
Chair, you've mentioned there's a process for opting out of the overlay. So, how does, can you give an executive overview of what that process is?
For the creation of the overlay district?
Well, no. You're, you're saying that if somebody has, for instance, this, this chunk... You're, you're saying that if somebody has, for instance, this, this chunk of property that was, you know, right here in the middle, that's currently an M2, you said that they could opt out of the overlay?
Yes, sir.
But they come before us, how does that process work?
There is a provision in the actual overlay document under character area land use map changes. And I'll just read it so that everyone can hear what, what's stated in the actual overlay. Any property owner may apply for an amendment to the Henry County Fairview overlay map. Amendments may request the expansion of a character area, a change in the character area designation, or removal from the overlay. Applications for amendments shall be processed in accordance with Section 1202, 112 of the Unified Land Development Code. So we treat it just like we would treat any other land use map amendment. Those amendments would have to go before the zoning advisory board, and then they would come to this board for a final decision.
And then the other question I had was, that big piece of yellow, the, the property that's M2 currently, how many acres is that?
Seventy-seven acres.
And how big is the entire overlay district? And how many acreage?
I don't believe I have that answer, Commissioner. Um... Let's see. A second. Commissioner, I don't believe I have the actual acreage for the overall overlay.
I guess the reason I'm asking is because I'm just trying to figure out how, in relationship to the whole piece, how big is that chunk, so we can kind of understand the materiality. I mean, maybe it's going back to the old accounting days, but I mean, I definitely should, should probably weigh into it to a degree.
I have a map of everything but the total acreage for the actual overlay.
I have a question for Commissioner Bowman. Commissioner Bowman?
Be okay with, with a, a light commercial in the area where that, where zoned M1? So would you be?
Would you roll on with light commercial for that seventy-some odd acres?
Well, I leave. I feel like it needs to be, you know, like, you can always, you know, zone it down, but having an M zoning, I, it's hard for me to, it's hard for me to do it because that person, there again, I'm trying to look at the rights of that person that bought it five or six years ago.
I mean, I doubt if, if Co-Part decided to, to move on, that another Co-Part is gonna come right back to that, to that site.
Well, I have no idea what Co-Parks may or may not do at the end of the day. I'm, I'm looking at it purely from the standpoint of, you have this one, you have it now, you, you know, we're gonna say you can't do it. I mean, I, at, at the end of the day, anything that they do, if they sell out, it's gonna come back before a board anyway, even if it's, even if it would be an M zoning provide, depending on what the use was to coming in. I, I just have a hard time taking that right away from, I don't care if it's John Deere Tractor Company, you know, whoever it is, so. I mean, I, I think that, that doing overlays, I'd, I'd love to see one done on East Lake because of all that raw dirt that's, you know, from 155 all the way to 42, I think that's a prime piece. There's really nothing in there other than a sewer plant for Clayton County. I, I'd love to see something like that happen there, and I think it's, I think it's a good idea, but at the end of the day, I, I, you know, if, if, if they decide that they wanna opt out, that, that was a question I was actually gonna ask, if we approve, if it gets approved tonight and they wanna opt out, is that provision still open?
Yes, they can still opt out. They would go through the same process as any other land use map amendment. Now, you all certainly, because you are adopting this overlay, you are adopting the boundaries of the overlay. So you certainly could have that conversation tonight if you want to do that. I just caution on that simply because we've had a lot of public comments and the boundaries were established.
Right. I wanna go ahead and move forward, and I wanna amend the map to keep the Co-Part property the same in overlay, and also add in that one piece, the piece that Mr. Gossett referred to.
542 Fairview Road.
And then that alleviates everybody's concern.
I have a question. Is there any, is maybe the consultants, is there any unintended consequences from doing that? You know, from, does, does that?
And while Alex is coming, I think he's, did some rough numbers, he says roughly about four hundred and fifty acres for the entire overlay.
All right, could you repeat the question?
I was asking Alex if there was, you know, 'cause if we, if we keep that, that property, M2, keep it M2, and then we also move that piece of orange that's cut off by Rowan Road, move it over to where it's also a town center like the others that are on the other side, to the, to the east of that road?
Yeah.
Do those, those two changes, do those give y'all pause, any unintended consequences? I mean, you guys deal with this on a, on a much more frequent basis, and we just make sure we keep this overlay intact for, for the desire of what it was put together for with all the work of the citizens.
For the property along Rowan Road, that, that was actually a discussion that came up in the steering committee, and it actually was a very close call, that I feel very comfortable with that change because we're about just ever so slightly tilting in the other direction, but given some of the feedback that we've received tonight, I think that would be appropriate. Our, our rationale was basically to make sure that on that entrance to Fairview Road, that there was gonna be similar development on both sides. And the way that the, the property is, is designated by the county, it's actually, it just shows as a separate parcel, not necessarily as a single parcel. If it was one parcel for that entire area, we would certainly not have made that sort of move. But I agree with, with Commissioner Holmes' recommendation to change that, that, that seems very reasonable. With regard to Co-Part, I would say that, that was something that came up, obviously Mr. Gossett expressed, and Commissioner Bowman also expressed very eloquently some of the issues with that. We were being guided by the future land use map, essentially, and taking that that was a, that there was a real public process behind that, and everything that we heard, with the exception of, of a few individuals, seemed to reinforce this idea that that was a use that had its time, and, but it may not be appropriate in the direction that this area is heading. Now, we understand, we respect property rights, and we wanna make sure that, that we're not taking anything from people, but we also kind of recognize that in any sort of land use decision, there's going to be some discussion, those who dissent, and the, the idea is that we're trying to make as many people happy, or at least not upset as possible.
And, and I'm, I'm not trying to do all the work of what y'all have done in all these committee meetings in one night, but I mean, when I, and Sherri probably knows where I'm going with this, it's 'cause it's happened in District Two a lot, so we've tried to create transition points where you go from residential, whether it's heavy to residential to moderate residential, and then you go light residential, and you have transition points. I'm concerned if we, if we do make, keep that M2, but then have the, the residential right below it, there's no, there's no transition points, there's no buffers.
The M2 is the current zoning. This overlay will not change that M2. The M2 will be there until that property is redone, rezoned to something else.
If I, if I may, that, that's actually part of the issue, where you've got, you've sensed the time that that was zoned M2, you now have residential uses that are pretty much right adjacent to it, and as much as we'd like to acknowledge that, you know, Co-Part was there first, and that they bought it perhaps thinking that it was going to be industrial forever, the nature of the area has changed, and given the, some of the, the feedback that we've received, that was, that was the direction we chose to go.
Is there not a, I mean, well, I don't know if it compromised the, I mean, is this process already been so mature that all the sides have all talked about it, and this is just going to be one way or the other, or is there a compromise here if they're not using all that property?
Well, again, I think that the, the bigger picture here is the future land use map. We didn't change any land uses. We literally just created guidelines for what's already been adopted, which has already gone through a public process. The fear in that is, if you take this parcel and you change it to anything other than that low-density residential, or anything other than the residential character, then ultimately you've changed the other parcels that are surrounding it. There's nothing that would preclude the other property owners from coming forward saying, "I want the same thing," and then you've allowed industrial or commercial to creep further into a residentially developed area. So I, I certainly think that the flume went through a very tedious process. It took us years to get to that point, and it involved public involvement. We've also had our steering committee, and the public involved throughout this process. And I think while there may be some that don't agree with it, a majority of the individuals supported this area remaining as residential.
Last question, then I'll be quiet on it, is if we change the land use map in this area on this, are there some ripple effects in other districts of, if we're, we're calling, changing the land use map and trying to chisel off and make this M2 in the future, is that a problem?
I think anytime you amend the future land use map, and there is no public involvement where the public is afforded an opportunity to come and speak on this change, I don't think the individuals here tonight were prepared to discuss amendment to the land use map because it's already been adopted. So certainly I, and I'm not an attorney, but I certainly think that one could ask that question, you know, we've amended the future land use map for this purpose, and it certainly could not bode well in future areas of the county.
I have a question. What we basically doing is rezoning at a given time under certain conditions, a tract of land without the owner actually making an application for a zoning map change, is that?
No, sir. What you all are doing tonight, every property that is currently zoned will stay zoned, whatever that zoning designation is today, that is the current zoning designation.
Right. I understand that part.
The only thing that you all are doing tonight is creating design guidelines, so that if someone comes in and they want to develop a undeveloped tract or a tract for redevelopment, they will understand that there are certain standards. There's a certain requirement on how tall a sign can be. There's a requirement on where curb cuts will go. There's a requirement on how buildings will look. There's a requirement on where those buildings will be placed, where parking will be placed, the amount of landscaping.
I understand that. But what I'm saying is that the issue here, we got an owner that's sitting on M2, and if I understand this correctly, if the owner ever sells it and it's redeveloped, it has to be mandated to be residential.
That is correct.
Okay. I have, I have a problem with that, too.
But the property would have to be rezoned, because right now the property is M2, if we're still talking about.
The owner would have to request that, is that what you're saying?
That is correct.
Okay, now, if the owner never requested for it to be rezoned, he wanted to sell it, and they wanna put another manufacturing concern there, could they do that?
As long as he's not submitting new development plans. If there's an M2 business, they can go.
Right now, could they resubmit new development plans for that tract of land?
He, he would have to come into compliance with the overlay district.
No, I'm talking about right now, without the overlay. Could he come in and, and somebody sell it and come in with some redevelopment plans?
Yes, sir, because he has an M2 zone piece of property.
For M2?
Yes, sir.
When he gets to the overlay, they can't do that.
He can do that, but he cannot do M2. He can redevelop the property, but he has to meet the requirements of the overlay.
So that means he has to go residential.
He has to develop it for residential, yes, sir.
That's if we don't amend the map to keep that section M2 in the overlay, correct?
The future land use map shows the property as low-density residential.
Oh, the future land use, okay, I thought I asked that question earlier, and you said no.
No, sir. The future land use map has this property as low-density residential. It is not industrial today.
So, so, so in the future land use map, if Co-Part goes away and we don't do the overlay, it's still gonna convert to residential?
No, sir. No, sir. The, the future land use map has the property designated as low-density residential. If the overlay were not in play and Co-Part decides, "We no longer wanna do this business, and we want to do another industrial business," they are entitled to do that under the current M2 with no overlay in place. If they decide, "I no longer want M2," and Starbucks wants to go there, Starbucks would have to rezone the property, but they would also have to do a land use map amendment, because right now that property's future development is shown as low-density residential. Although the zoning on the property is M2, the future land use map shows that property as low-density residential. So the rezoning would trigger that land use map amendment.
Okay, that's, that's, that's what I, that's what I thought I just asked.
Mr. Chair, I think it's important to know what the future land use map is. The future land use map is a statement that says, it's a twenty-year outlook into the future, that, which says that this is how we expect a piece of property to be zoned some point in the future. At what point, we don't really know, but it's a twenty-year document, so it has a long lifespan. So along that continuum, if Starbucks wanted to come in at year five, it may be time for that to be rezoned in that manner, it may not. That will be a decision that this board will make at the time the rezoning application came in. Currently, when you have rezoning applications that come before you, you have the existing zoning map, and you have the future land use map, and you, staff will urge you to always make your zoning decisions consistent with what the future land use map shows for that property.
So what does this future land use map show for the Co-Part property?
Low-density residential.
So, so that's what I, that's what I asked.
Yes.
So it's already low-density residential?
That's correct.
Correct.
So if we, if we, if, if we adopt this overlay, I mean, so if they sell, anyway, it's gonna be residential, correct?
No, sir.
That was, that's the recommendation.
Oh, he has to be, gotcha.
You still have to come back, and staff would say.
Okay.
So with the overlay district, if this is approved, if a piece of property within this overlay district comes before you for rezoning, you're gonna have the zoning map, you're gonna have the future land use map, and now you're gonna have the overlay district. All of those elements will be combined to review a zoning application within the Fairview overlay district.
So if we keep the overlay district the same, and we keep that property, you know, under M, under the overlay map, it's, there's no difference, right?
The overlay is just the design guideline, so no, sir, there is no difference, because the property would still be zoned M2.
So if anybody wanted to come in and, and if they wanted to build houses, if they bought the property, they wanted to build houses, they'll have to come in and rezonate residential.
That is correct.
If they wanted to bring in commercial, they have to come in and rezonate commercial.
That's correct. If they decide to build homes, they would rezonate, but they're now bound by the overlay district.
Okay, so let's just amend the map, keep it, keep it consistent with the M1 or M2, whatever it is, and move forward with it.
Okay, are you saying amend the future land use map?
No, I'm talking about amend the overlay.
Well, that would have to come back at a different public hearing, because tonight we didn't advertise to amend the future land use map.
No, I said amend the overlay, that section in the overlay, so we can, so we can vote on it, and keep it M1 for Co-Part.
I think, I think you're basically saying just change the overlay lines.
Correct.
You're saying to chisel out that line.
Bring the map up here, Sherri.
So Reed's issue is that this is changed to residential, keep it zoned, whatever the zoning is, in the overlay.
It's still the original zone, it's not changing, they still have it.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about in, in the color, just keep it, keep it M2.
Well, that's the problem, we don't have it. It's either residential, conventional, or town center, it can only be orange, red, or yellow. We're not showing it as residential. We can't change it to M2. They can be, and petition to you after you remove from the overlay.
Okay, so we can move forward.
So Sherri, can you just explain to me, to, to everybody what you just explained to me about them coming back and petitioning?
If, if, when the, if the board moves to adopt this tonight, we'll use Co-Part, since that's what we've been discussing, the property owner has the right to come back to the board and petition to be removed from the overlay district. Staff will prepare a staff report, and it will go through the same process as anyone in... else that wants to submit a rezoning request that's inconsistent with the future land use map. So the applicant still would, or the property owner still would have an opportunity, if in the near future they decide to expand, if they decide to sell the property to someone else, if they receive a contract on the property and they know that they need to submit development plans, they can petition to this board to be removed from the overlay district, as can any property owner.
Any further discussion? Any comments? Yes, sir.
I'm Dennis Gossett, 870 Clark Drive. My next question is, right now, we do this, and so it's going to cause Co-Part a fee now to have opt-out. It's going to be a process they got to go through, cost them money, correct?
That's correct.
And also, if the overlay goes in, Co-Part's still got their M2 zoning, the overlay goes in without protecting Co-Part's, let's say, they come in here next week after this overlay is done, want to build a new building on that 77 acres. Can they do it?
No.
If new development plans are submitted, they will be bound by the overlay.
So if a tornado comes through there, tears their office down, they can't build it back?
There are provisions in our code regarding non-conforming uses, and then that's when that provision would kick in. So if it's something where a tornado comes in and a certain percentage of that building is destroyed, and based on the market value of it, they would be entitled to rebuild that structure. They are protected under that provision. But if a new set of development plans were to come in for a new development, they certainly would be bound by the overlay, if they do not elect to opt-out.
Now, how much of a process is it for them to opt-out? Is it easy or hard, or is it going to be hurdles to jump through to opt-out?
Well, it's the same process as any other land use map amendment. Applicants submit an application, they go to the zoning advisory board, and then they come before the Board of Commissioners. I would like to think it's an easy process, because we have a good staff that'll take them through that process, but certainly with any land use map amendment, there may be individuals who may not support that, and it's a public process. So the public certainly can come and either speak in favor of that or speak in opposition to it.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody have a comment? Question? Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, I thought you had closed.
State your name and address, please.
I'm Mildred Schmelz, 170 Dink Scott Court, Ellinwood, Georgia. I thought you had closed the public comments, but obviously you haven't. I am just flabbergasted at this meeting tonight, because Commissioner Holmes really did a very good job of laying everything out to the public regarding this whole overlay issue. We had a steering committee. We met numerous times. I served on the steering committee. The public was invited to come and to give their opinion regarding the overlay. So I'm just really a little perturbed by all of this. Mr. Gossett served on steering committee also. And when we finally left our very last meeting, everybody was in agreement regarding this whole issue, and now there are other issues, which I believe is based on money. I have lived in Henry County for 21 years. I love Henry County, but we have got to move forward. We have got to move forward. We have got to make this a better county. I am sick of garbage. I am sick of businesses that just look deplorable in this county. We have got to move forward and make Henry County a better county. I moved here because of the quality of life here in Henry, the school system. I thought it was a beautiful county, and over the few years, I've just seen it just go to heck. And I want to see this county move forward and be the county that I know it can be. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Sherry, just, I'll let her.
Hi, I'm Ruby Benjamin. I live in 143 Overbrook Place in Stockbridge, Georgia, and I was on the steering committee as well. And I'm a little bit surprised, too, because when we met with the land use map, they said that there would be no exception to the zoning, is what I heard. So I'm a little bit surprised at all of this tonight. It's really shocking that this has come up. But nevertheless, I understand Dennis's problem here, and if this land use map is going to apply to every district in our county, there's not going to be any way that no citizen can say that they want M1, M2 in an overlay district. So my concern is that if we make an exception to this rule, what happens to the other districts in the county? We have other citizens that might want to object, who may have an M1 or M2 approval of their land. What happens to our county as a whole? We could have many citizens, if Dennis does this, then even if every community, another citizen could come up and say the same thing. So I guess I want to know what prevents other citizens in our whole county and all your districts from ever having this exception come up. I yield the floor back to the commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, we have a comment here from.
Sherry, my question for you is, what keeps the future land use most intact? Chiseling the lines around it or approving it as it currently is, and with the right of them appealing the ruling? Which one keeps the future land use more intact for the whole county?
Certainly, I think the latter, because the future land use map has already been adopted. The land uses have already been designated, and certainly the process did include looking at what was already on the ground and current zonings. I think what we heard when the future land use map was adopted in 2009 is that while this property exists there now, and there's nothing that we can do to change that, and certainly, again, not saying that I don't want the property owner there or the use there, but when we developed and adopted the future land use map, there were conversations that were made that in the future, if this property is ever redeveloped, we want it to be redeveloped as low-density residential. And certainly, the amendment process isn't something new. That's in our Unified Land Development Code. Every property owner has this right. The Co-Part property is just one parcel. There are probably 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 other parcels in the county that currently have zonings that may not be consistent with the future land use map, and it's because those zonings have existed for some time. So certainly, what we're proposing is not unheard of, and certainly, it's not something that I feel will take us down a road of where we're doing something that's not right. We've laid out the process. There is an amendment process in the overlay, and certainly, I think that will, that should take care of any issues even beyond the Co-Part parcel, any other property owners who may not be here tonight that may have concerns about being a part of the overlay.
And then the last question. Buffer between the Chesapeake Road and then the M2 property behind it, is there, are there any buffers? Is there, what's currently separating or creating that transition point?
The code does require buffers. Where industrial abuts residential, there is a 40-foot buffer, so that would still be required. I'm not sure if there's anything in place now, but that is still a requirement of the code.
Mr. President, Mr. Ford. Sherry, how many times have we amended the 2009 future land use map?
The Board of Commissioners has not amended the map. We have probably had, since 2009, no more than five requests from applicants to amend the future land use map, and I would, five is just my.
Have we met, did we change anything on those requests on the future land use map?
Most of the amendments came forward with a rezoning request, and honestly, a lot of the requests that came forward absolutely made sense. It was situations where you may have had a parcel of land that was cushioned in between commercial, and certainly, staff supported that.
And those five made sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, I just wanted, in reference to the lady that stepped up, the future land use map, we try to stick to it as much as possible. When something comes up, if a business comes up, if it makes sense to do it, then the map is amended. We've done it five times. I actually thought we'd done it a few more than that.
And don't quote me on the five, but I think it was about five times.
Okay. But anyway, at the end of the day, that's how we would do it for the benefit of the lady that came up, you know? They would be, we could amend the map. The board, whomever that may be, could amend the map.
Yes, sir.
Sir, state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Richard Silva. I live at 305 Summit Heights Court, Ellinwood, Georgia. Good evening, Mr. Commissioner and fellow commissioners. I echo the same concerns as the other two young ladies that came to the microphone to discuss the process that we went through relative to the steering committee based on the overlay. For us to start making decisions tonight, after we've gone through painstaking meetings, to discuss from a collective democratic process with the public to say, "This is what we would like in our neighborhood," as opposed to have an industrial businesses in our neighborhood as we go forward? That's a problem to me. I mean, we spent months and months and months with this group and the consulting company to determine what we would like the future of our neighborhood to look like, right? So we want commercial, we want business, we want to uplift the properties, we want to create quality, we want to increase the quality of living within our neighborhoods. We don't want industrial corporations to come in our neighborhoods, set up plants, set up manufacturing facilities, and we look like some industrial nation, right? That's not what we want in our neighborhood. We want a neighborhood that has this overlay that says, "When you come in here to build, you won't come in here and just throw a liquor store on the corner. You won't come in here and throw a tire shop on the corner without abiding by the rules that we've set as a community." So that steering committee was comprised of members throughout that Henry County area that will be affected by the area. Those are the people that we need to listen to, because those are the people that live in the neighborhood, not people that want to come in and set up an industrial business and say, "Here's what I'm going to put in your neighborhood, and I don't live there to have to deal with it." So I'm not here to argue and create ruckus, but I think that that steering committee will, if we start making decisions tonight that go in the opposite direction of what we agreed to as a community. And I'm just stunned. I'm sitting here at first, I'm like, "Okay, this is just going to pass because it makes sense, because the community said this is what we want." Then I started hearing about, "Oh, we need to make a change here, and we need to make a change there." And where was all that conversation when we had the steering committee meeting for months on end with the consulting company to say, "This is what we want to choose." And it wasn't just the steering committee, it was the public. We had several public meetings where people came in and said, "Here is what I'd like our community to look like. Here's what I'd like our buildings to look like. Here is the material that we'd like our buildings to be made of. Here's what parking needs to look like. Here's what the landscaping needs to look like." We made those decisions over a long period of time. So we can't come here tonight, in a matter of an hour or two, and say, "We're going to change all of that, and this is what your neighborhood is going to look like." That can't happen. That's not a democratic process. That's one person or two people making a decision for an entire community, and that's just not right. And so I just wanted to share that comment, and hopefully, we're going to move this in the right direction, because what we're talking about right now is not what we agreed to, and I can tell you right now, there is going to be some rebuttal if you guys decide to make these changes that are contrary to what we agreed to. Right? Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to call in to the public hearing, so the floor is open for a commissioner to move in any direction or make any comments.
I'm going to go ahead and move to approve the overlay with the amendment to add in the piece of property for, the piece of property that Mr. Gossett discussed a little bit earlier, and leave the Co-Part area the same as it is on the current overlay map.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the resolution approving the creation of the section 4.02.02 Fairview Overlay.
Before I make it, Sherry, do you understand what the commissioner's asking for?
Yes, sir.
I think we need to get a second, and then we can discuss it and ask questions. So if you want a second for discussion, we have a second now, ask a question. I didn't quite understand what he said either. I don't know the implications of what.
Sherry, please.
I believe what you're asking, I mean, your motion is to include the 40-acre tract, which is referenced as 542 Fairview Road. It's currently shown as conventional suburban, and you want to amend the map to show that it's town center. Co-Part will remain as it is shown on the map currently.
For my clarifications, Co-Part is 77 acres. Right now, it's M2? M1, M2?
M2.
Okay. Now, if there's no overlay, they can sell it, and somebody can come in, get development plans, and redevelop it as M2. Okay? Now, if the overlay goes into effect, they can do nothing. They can't, if they're coming in to make any improvements to it, that means it has to be changed over to residential without a zoning process. Is that?
If the overlay goes into effect, two things can happen. They can petition to the board to amend and remove themselves from the overlay, or they can rezon the property to develop it for residential purposes, under the current overlay.
So when they get any overlay, the people in property that's already zoned, for them to continue where they at, or to get out of it, they have to petition as if it was a rezoning request.
For this parcel only, because I can't say that's true for parcels that may already be zoned commercial, that fall within an area that's designated for future commercial. This is just this one tract of land. And let me put this on the overhead, because this may help answer the question. This is the current zoning map. The large tract of land that's shown as gray is the Co-Part piece. Everything else surrounding that property is zoned RA, in which would, in that property would be consistent with what we're saying that character area is, which is residential. If you look up at the remaining parcels that are along Fairview Road, a large number of those parcels are already zoned commercial. They can continue utilizing that commercial designation. Once they submit their development plans, the commercial will remain, but they're now bound by whatever those design guidelines are. All of the parcels that are along Fairview that are shown as white are currently zoned RA. If they look to develop that property for commercial, they'll have to submit a rezoning application and go through a public hearing, and then their development plans would have to meet the current overlay district. So the only tract of land right now that would directly be, that would directly be impacted by the adoption of this overlay would be that 77-acre tract of industrial land.
Any further questions, discussion? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. All opposed, raise your right hand. Passes three to two. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move down to public hearing. Mike Riswell of McDonough requests an appeal to the zoning advisory denial of a variance application to reduce the front yard setback from property located at 2109 Jonesboro Road in Land Lot 110, 6th District. Don Teck, how you doing?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. The agenda item you have before you is a request to appeal the zoning advisory board's denial of a variance application to reduce the front yard setback for property located at 2109 Jonesboro Road in Commission District 2. The subject property is the current location of Firehouse Subs. There was an existing building on the site, and the applicant did receive a building permit for interior renovations. However, after the certificate of occupancy was issued, the applicant constructed an awning over the existing outdoor patio. The awning extends into the setback by 17 feet. The applicant is asking to reduce the front yard setback from 50 feet, which is a requirement for that particular zoning, to 33 feet. Georgia DOT will be widening Jonesboro Road, and according to their concept plan, they will be acquiring property on this site and would take the current awning under the new proposed right-of-way. Regarding the timeline for that project, I do not have that answer. And as far as the zoning advisory board's decision, they denied the variance request on March 13, 2014. This time, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Anybody got any questions? At this time, we'd recognize the applicant. At this time, we'd recognize the applicant, the pa- palant, would like to come forward and make a statement.
I'm Mike Chriswell. I'm the owner of Firehouse Subs at this address, which is 2109 Jonesboro Road, and I took possession of this building, it used to be a Quiznos, and it had, Quiznos already had the outdoor seating there. I didn't add to it whatsoever. The concrete slab was already there. From day one, I've taken possession of this building, and it was always understood between me and the landlord that we would make this area nice for the public to use, because the building's so small, it's only 1,600 square feet. So, I needed this extra 400 square feet for the customers in order to grow the business. So, I wanted it to look nice as I possibly could. I just didn't want to add tables out there and put umbrellas. So, I invested all this money to enclose the concrete slab, which was already at this location. We didn't pull anything, we didn't add to. As far as the footage, it was already existing when it was Quiznos. So, all I did was put a top on it so it can be used in the rain and, and climate weather, and I fenced it in, which would be required to use it as an outdoor seating anyway. Also invested to have a door moved and placed so the customer could easily open and walk out onto the patio. And that's all we did, was add a top. I did not add any square footage to the building. All we did was enclose the concrete patio that was already there and fence it in to make it look nice, instead of just a couple of umbrellas stuck up there. And so, I ask that you allow me to keep this. I hired a company to do this, and when they came in and did this, I assumed they had went through the proper channels, because I'm just the owner and operator of all the firehouses here in Henry County and Spalding County, and I just wanted it to look nice instead of just some umbrellas. And didn't, I, at the time, I wasn't aware that, that they didn't follow proper channels. I just assumed that they had when they installed it. Now, I understand they're going to widen the road, and that's not until 2020, which is six years down the road. So, if that's true, I ask that you at least let me keep the awning the way it is until it needs to come down. It's portable, it's nothing that can't be removed, and for Henry County, at least for the next six years. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I would open the floor up for public comments, for or against, whatever, in 15 minutes, and if you would, if you came to the, come to the podium, state your name and address for the records, please. See, none, the public hearing is closed? I, I have a, a, one little question for counsel. If that building is there, and somebody runs off the road, and, and it's something there that shouldn't be there, would there be any consequence?
That's a very good question. All of the setbacks that we have, I'm assuming are based on some type of analysis about public safety and driver's safety. So, I'm not sure how close to the road or the right-of-way this particular construction is. Can you tell me, Dante, how it relates to the right-of-way, and how far off the road the setback?
Sure, I will say this. Once they constructed the awning on the, the building, prior to the awning, there was a concrete pad on the property that predates the current ULDC. There is a section in our ordinance regarding non-conforming structures, and when they placed the awning on, on the building, the non-conforming structure enlarged. So, it, that part of, of Section 110103 kicked it into current zoning regulations. Prior to the current regulate, zoning regulations being applicable, it, it could have remained where it was, 33 feet from the property line, but now there needs to be 50 feet from the property line. So, regarding it technically being in compliance with the ordinance, it was at one point, but because of the action they took with the awning, it now has to be further from the property line.
So, what I'm hearing you saying is that the awning was, is what triggered the current variance request, but as far as the location from the roadway, it was already beyond what our code provides anyway?
It was beyond what, what the current regulations are, yes.
So, this particular awning, or this particular request doesn't expand any liability that wasn't already there before it was placed there, because the concrete pad already extended beyond what our ordinance requires, is what I'm understanding.
District 2.
I have a few things just to share on this, is, Mr. Chriswell, you, you came and spoke. First of all, I want to thank you for having businesses in Henry County, and I know nobody came up to speaking in your favor, but I received a number of emails from people in the community that appreciate you and obviously feel, you know, very much appreciative to the point that they wrote us to kind of express their concern, that we make sure we treat you right and fair. And so, don't think just because nobody's here, you know, I know everybody's busy out there in the community, but there were emails that came saying, make sure we look at this. And the chairman and I even had a chance to talk about this issue, and I want you to know, nobody thinks you've done anything wrong necessarily, except for that your contractor that you hired didn't do all the work, they didn't check all the boxes that they were supposed to, and that's shame on them, and, and might, you might have some legal justification to talk to them about why they didn't go pull permits and do other things, because I don't think you've necessarily done anything wrong in this case. From my understanding, just talking to Sherry, we've had meetings on this as well, it's the roof that's causing all the trouble. You know, as soon as we put the awning top, and as Dante just shared too, it, it made it a different, instead of an outdoor patio, it became a structure, and, and that's what kind of got it, got this, turned this into an issue. We have sliced, diced, and looked at this thing up and down, trying to figure out how in the world we try to work with you, because I, I do not, especially business owners who are providing a quality of, you know, what I consider quality of life is restaurants, also employing people who live probably in the county as well, and then I eat in your restaurants for lunch. I don't want to do anything that alienates you, so I've tried to ask staff, how do we work with this owner so it doesn't hurt them? What I've found, though, is that because of the widening of the road, and then also the precedent this could set, we have, I, I think the structure's going to have to come down at some point. So, what I'd like to do is try to give staff a, a chance to talk to DOT, get a little more clarification on the timeline. This is not saying you're getting a variance, because I, like I said, I want to go on record and let you know, I think that roof is going to have to come off that building at some point, but I do want to give enough time for staff to get, to get, get a timeline from DOT, but also to, to see, is there compromise on working with, you know, because I, if we put in writing through legal discussion that it's understood that, that we can't have this awning because of the precedent it sets, that we're not getting a variance? I, I don't know, I just want to have staff enough time to, to look at this issue, but I just want to prepare you, the awning's going to come down at some point, but I want, I want to give you the benefit of the doubt that we look at this, and I want to make sure I give the commissioners enough time to talk about, but I'm going to make the motion after I let them have their, their points to, to table this issue, to give staff a little bit more time.
The only other comment I would make, number one, is you got a 50-foot right-of-way, 50-foot setback, so if you use 33 feet, that reduces it to 17 feet. But anything within 5% or so would be a variance. When I look at a variance, it's something that's kind of due to hardship, that you absolutely can't apply a, a code and make it work. So, I, I don't really, I don't think the timeframe for the construction would be significant to me, because it is a structure, as long as it had the pad, which is just a regular pad, like a driveway, and they, and the owner went out and put some tables and put some umbrellas, I tell you, that's one thing, but, but it's kind of like you'd have to consider that a permanent structure. Now, if that's the case, in my mind, if some, if some of the other owners want to do that, then that becomes the new standard, as, as far as precedent's being set. So, that's, that's my take on it. Anybody else have any comments? If not, we have a.
Motion to table the issue to give staff a little bit more time.
We have a motion to table it. Has second, Second District 1. Any further discussion? Hall in favor of tabling this for future, raise your right hand. Hall opposed, no, so move. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Move down, we have a request to appear before the board made by Mr. Steve Richardson to discuss county politics. Mr. Richardson, is anybody here representing Mr. Richardson?
There's two more.
Just one more. Just one more.
I'm sorry.
For rezoning.
That's okay. Davis, I'm sorry, I already checked it, I got ahead of myself. Let's back up, let it give Mr. Richardson time to get here. Public hearing, Davis Brothers Incorporated, McDonough, Georgia, request for rezoning from RA Residential Agricultural to District Charlie 3. Highway Commercial for property located on the north side of Jonesboro Road, east of Foster Drive, in Landlock 112 of the 6th District. The property consists of 4.04 plus or minus acres, and requests for commercial development. Mr. Kipps.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The item you have before you is a request to rezone a property located north, on the north side of Jonesboro Road, east of Foster Drive, in Commission District 3, from RA Residential Agricultural to C3 Highway Commercial. It would be, the property would consist of 4.04 plus minus acres, whereas the remaining 13.29 acres will remain RA. The, the request is consistent with the future land use map, and however, for consistency with the abutting C2 zone properties, planning staff recommended that the, recommended denial of the C3 Highway Commercial zoning designation, and recommends approval of the C2 general commercial zoning designation, with five conditions listed in the staff report, as well as adding the Henry County Department of Transportation condition directing, condition, directing the applicant to coordinate the site design with Henry County DOT, to allow for a possible roadway between Jonesboro Road and Foster Drive. And I would like to interject, there was a letter received this afternoon from Smith Welch, Webb &amp; White regarding amending the verbiage on, on the one of the conditions regarding Henry County DOT, and if you don't have a copy, I can provide one to you if you like. Do you have, each of you have copies of this letter?
I don't have one. I think we got a copy of the email, but I didn't get a hard copy.
Moving on, one, one other thing. The applicant is agreeable to restricting some uses that would have been allowed under C2 and C3 if the board approves the zoning change to C3. The zoning advisory board recommended approval from RA Residential Agricultural to C3 Highway Commercial with eight conditions. The conditions are the five listed in the staff report. Condition six is the list of uses currently allowed in C1, C2, and C3 that the applicant agrees to exclude. Condition seven, where the property owner will inform any future tenants or owners that the uses listed under condition six are prohibited. And condition eight is based on the recommendation of the Henry County DOT that the applicant will coordinate the site de- design with Henry County DOT to allow for a possible future roadway between Jonesboro Road and Foster Drive. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them at this time.
Anybody have any questions? We have a question from District 1.
Planning and zoning, did they approve number eight on the list?
The Henry County DOT recommendation? Yes, so that was added after the staff report was actually written, when we had the ZAB meeting prior to the, the public hearing, we, we accepted the recommendation.
They were familiar with it.
Sir?
They were familiar with it.
Item eight?
Number eight, yes, sir.
Item eight.
Item eight, we deleted to allow, we just took out allow for.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Planning and zoning board was familiar with that, is that what you're saying?
No, I was answering the question to Commissioner Moss. Are you, are you regarding the letter that I just gave you? Is that what you're asking?
Right.
That was received today, so that would be a decision that you guys would have to make a motion on.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? If not, we'd recognize the applicant. State your name and, for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Andy Welch, I'm representing Davis Brothers Incorporated in this rezoning request. Dante's gone through a very thorough presentation of you of the history of this, procedural history of this particular rezoning request, and there's not much to add to it, other than what we worked on, and you'll see through the conditions that are attached to your resolution for approval, if the board so chooses, is a, an effort by the property owner to ensure that the property would be consistent with the commercial property that's around the area. You've talked to great length about the future land use map tonight. This rezoning request is consistent with the future land use map. It meets the rezoning criteria that are set forth in your rezoning ordinance. The one issue that has been raised was, was staff with respect to a C2, was trying to have a transitional step down. It should be noted that there is a C2 zoning to the eastern part of this parcel, so that there is a step down in terms of getting to a residential and moving to a lower C, C commercial level. The commercial C3 zoning would be consistent with the C3 zoning that's directly across the street. Across Jonesboro Road, the property is zoned for C3 commercial, and you know this area in terms of the intersection with I-75 and Jonesboro Road, as having a high degree of commercial, C3 commercial, highway commercial in that area. So, what we've done is we've tried to design a presentation for you of conditions, and condition number six is the one where we go through and eliminate numerous permitted uses that are, and some conditional uses that are allowed under C1, C2, and C3. So, and the effort here is, if you just give a straight C2 zoning, then you actually would not have these limitations that are set forth under condition six, and many of the uses that you see under condition six would be permitted uses under a C2 zoning. The effort here is to try to make this a C3, to allow for the potential uses that we see for the property, but also acknowledging the limitation and, and trying to curtail this to match up with the zoning uses for that particular area. The request that we've presented to you tonight for a slight amendment deals with condition number eight, and what we've asked for here is that the language be struck where it says the applicant to coordinate site design with Henry County DOT, and Henry County DOT, and the acronym, to consi, it says to allow for a possible future roadway between Jonesboro Road and Foster Drive. This condition was presented to us on the night of the planning and zoning hearing. It was recommended by staff at that time. We don't have a problem with coordinating with DOT, should they want to go through and try to do an analysis of where a relocation of Foster Drive may make sense. My concern with the language to allow for denotes some consent of permission, and so what we are saying is that we'd, we'd rather have that language considered, so there is a discussion about the matter, but not to be construed as some kind of dedication of right-of-way going forward for a relocation of Foster Drive that may or may not happen. Those are the, the issues that we raised before you, and of course, we would like your favorable consideration for the resolution that's before you tonight with the amendment that we proposed, condition number eight, and if there are any questions, I'll be happy to take them.
Anybody have any questions, comment?
One more clarification.
Okay.
Because I think Bo asked it, and I just want to make sure I understood it. Dante, did DOT, I mean, because we're talking about two words, Terry, I mean, are you, is DOT fine with this, number eight? Can we, I mean, did you get your question answered on that, or am I?
I did.
You did, that, that DOT was okay with it?
No, no, yeah. No, I was concerned about the letter that the.
Right, and that's what, that's what, did we ever get clarification if D, if D? If the, if D., if Department of Transportation was okay with that change?
I think a little explanation will help everybody understand what we were asking for. We don't think is a, is a controlling factor to the, to the property. I don't know if I'll be able to see this very well or not. Some, some key ingredients in this, this is Bridges Road. The property being zoned is in this area here. I don't know if you can see it or not, but this over here, this section of Foster Road has some alignment problems. If you're right there where that three-way stop is, where you turn and go into the movie theater, if you've ever came in or out of there, you notice there's a, uh, the sight distance and all is just, needs to be corrected, hopefully one day. We have two ways that we were thinking about doing that in the future. One way is this alignment, um, which comes through here, which would have no impact to this property whatsoever. The other way would be, we would take a road off from, from Bridges, um, I'm sorry, from Bridges and it comes across here and then swings around, probably can't see the blue, but, but ties back in. We actually think that this is more of a preferred alignment. The reason that we were asking for this is, um, my understanding that his property's gonna be broke up into two or three parcels and will use the entire frontage, this, this zoning captures all the property along the frontage. It leaves a piece in the back, which makes sense to us that he would leave a roadway to access that property in the back. So where we think he would put that roadway to access the property in the back is the same location that we would use if we were to build this alignment. So, uh, now, if they're not, not going to put an entrance here that will serve that property in the back, you know, we don't want to hold up his construction. Like I say, we think this is a preferred alternate. This was, you know, this has some merit to it because it ties to, to Bridges and you get somewhat of a parallel connector, you know, moving south. But there's an extreme cost here in, in crossing this, uh, creek here that I, you know, may make it just economically maybe not as, as good. Uh, so there's some merit here. Probably the bang for the buck is over here, especially now that they're gonna do this. But again, if, my, my thought to kind of summarize it is, if he's gonna be leaving room for a future road to serve the back property, I would think he would place that in the median opening across from Bridges, which is the same place, we would like to use that if we ever build that future road.
That answer you, anybody's question?
I hope that ain't complicated.
So, so I guess I'll ask. So, you would prefer, if we didn't take the two words out and add consider? Is that the DOT's?
That's correct. And now, if they, again, if they come up with us with a plan that somehow or another accessing that back, and they don't need that roadway, uh, that opening there at Bridges, at that point in time, we would make the decision either to get on or get off, if you will, um, and not hold them hostage to the property. But, um, if, if they're gonna be putting a road there to serve that back property, we would like to, uh, be able to access that same road if, if we did go to that other alignment. Just leaving our options open.
And, and Andy, I, I will apologize, cause you've been, the applicant's been very good about coming to us and asking if we had questions and other things. I mean, really done a good thorough job of trying to make sure we could answer due diligence. I didn't make any phone calls after we got this in the afternoon, cause it was two words, but now I can kind of see that there was a little bit extra. What are, what is the applicant's thought after hearing Terry's?
Two things predominantly. Um, one is that, as you can see from the site plan that's in your report, um, you could see that the proposed street in the site plan and the, the ideal scenario for D., for D., his property already does an alignment for Bridges Road. So, conceptually, we're already on the same page with GDOT, uh, with Henry County DOT. Um, and we probably were gonna have to be that way also with GDOT. So I think that that's, the, the, the ultimate sighting of that access point will, will be governed largely based upon its alignment with Bridges Road. I think that's just gonna be a matter of engineering. But that's not what this condition, uh, you know, implies. And that's what I'm trying to get to, is that working with the county, working with GDOT on an alignment for a road is, you know, is certainly within, you know, everyone's desire purposes to facilitate a realignment of Foster Road, should it be necessary. And where a location makes sense. But this condition says that the applicant is to coordinate the site design of the property with Henry County DOT to allow for. I mean, it, it is a, an affirmative statement that we are to allow for the possible future roadway. So, does that mean that we have to set aside sixty feet, eighty feet, a hundred and twenty feet of future right of way in our site plans as we develop the front portions of the property? Or the rear portions of the property to the extent that that becomes an issue? And moreover, the, the application is to rezone four acres on the front. It doesn't actually zone the back pieces. So if the goal is to actually put a prescription on the rear property, that's not the subject of the rezoning tonight. So, it wouldn't achieve that purpose either. Um, my, my sincere concern with this is that, you know, we have a constitutional right to the preservation of our property, and we put a notice of that in the record of our rights. Zoning should not be utilized in a form to take or to place, um, unnecessary restrictions or development burdens on the property that don't have a reasonable nexus to the zoning of the property. In this case, this is an anticipated future realignment of Foster Drive, upon which there are three hypotheticals. Not one, but three, and we're the worst-case scenario. So, I don't see that that's justified. And all I'm saying is just, let's just change the language from allow for to consider. And that will be done, because that's gonna, the alignment with Bridges Road is gonna be a central par- portion of the engineering layout for this property. We think our request is very reasonable. We think it is a preservation of the rights of the property owner. Uh, and we think that a reading of this could be made to be a taking of the property rights in, in, in violation of his constitutional rights, and I don't think that would be appropriate, um, in this manner. But I do absolutely agree with, um, with Mr. McMichael, that there is a need to address Foster Drive. Um, I just don't think that this particular four-acre track along Jonesboro Road should be the, the, um, should have language attached to it that would be the focal point of that realignment.
So you're now saying, uh, in, in number eight, after it says Henry County DOT, it says, "To allow for, allow to consider for a possible." Is that what you just said?
No, so the, the, Mr. Chairman, the request would be to strike the words "allow for" in condition eight, and insert the word "consider."
Well, I did that and I took it all out, cause I thought you said that. So, I'm gonna scratch all this out. So I'm gonna scratch that and I put "consider" back in there. Okay, anybody else have any questions? If not, I'm on open floor, for fifteen minutes for, uh, public comments. If you would, uh, I'll, I'll give you fifteen minutes, uh, for it and fifteen minutes against it. So if you come to the podium, if you would be so kind, is to state your name and your address. See and none, hear and none. I declare that the, uh, public carrying portion is expired. We have a resolution in the book. If somebody wanted to move, uh, this is a District Three project in his absence. Uh, nobody would need to consider.
District Three, I speak for him. I, I make a motion that we approve changing the language of condition number eight.
Have a second, have a motion second, any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move, thank you. I'm gonna go over this page again, make sure I don't leave anything out. Okay, I'm taking this page over. Now, we'd like to recognize, uh, we have a request here from Mr. Steve Richardson. Or his, uh, is anybody here representing Mr. Richardson?
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Did the board approve the rezoning request with just the condition?
Yes, sir. Would, would the language change in number eight?
With the same language that she gave him, sir.
I just didn't, uh, I was just, there's a motion to approve the zoning request with that condition change.
Yes, sir. What, what they did, he adopted the, approved the resolutions in the book as published. And the language change was, we took out allow for and put to consider.
My motion was to approve it with the, with your applicant to coordinate site design with Henry County DOT to-
Yes.
-consider a possible future roadway between Jonesboro Road and Foster Drive.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, I'm saying that, uh, Mr. Richardson's time has expired since he's not present. Next, we have a resolution question and amendment to add Douglas County to the Joint Development Authority of Metro Atlanta, Mr. White. Greetings and salutations.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to speak before you tonight. And, uh, there's a very brief description in the, uh, agenda as to what, uh, this is about. But to be technical, this is a, a resolution, uh, we're requesting a resolution, amending a resolution that originally had authorized Henry County to join the Joint Development Authority of Metro Atlanta to add Douglas County to the mix. And if I may, just give you a quick background. In nineteen ninety-four, the Georgia General Assembly passed the Business Expansion Support Act, which was an economic development tool to create, uh, job creation, investment creation incentives for existing expanding industries, uh, in the state of Georgia. Another portion of that was to provide an additional incentive, a bonus, if you will, to encourage regional cooperation by giving, uh, businesses that locate in a county that participates in a joint development authority, an additional five hundred dollar per job credit. Uh, in two thousand and ten, the Joint Development Authority of Metro Atlanta, which at that time consisted of Clayton, DeKalb, Fulton and Rockdale Counties, approached Henry County, uh, recognized that Henry County was one of the fastest-growing counties, not only in the region, but in the country, and also one of the leaders in terms of economic development, to join the mix, if you will, and to become a member of the Joint Development Authority of Metro Atlanta. And at that time, the member counties, uh, the seated bodies there, their Board of Commissioners had to authorize, passing resolutions, authorizing Henry County to be able to join the Joint Development Authority of Metro Atlanta. This is a requirement, uh, of the official code of Georgia. And at the same time, the Commissioners, uh, in, that were seated at that time, also had to approve, uh, Henry County joining, uh, the Joint Development Authority of Metro Atlanta. And in April two thousand and eleven, your predecessor board did, uh, approve that. Since that time, the Board of the Joint Development Authority of Metro Atlanta, including the Henry County Development Authority, uh, members, uh, in an effort to broaden and strengthen the Joint Development Authority, uh, invited Douglas County to join the Joint Development Authority of Metro Atlanta. However, the, uh, again, the Georgia Code requires concurrent resolutions by each of the member counties, the Board of Commissioners of each of those, to pass resolutions, resolutions in support of the addition of, uh, in this case, Douglas County, before that could take place. So your counterparts in the other counties are doing exactly the same thing. They're being presented resolutions in support of adding Douglas County. Uh, at our May first meeting of the joint, of the Henry County Development Authority, our board, recognizing the, the value of, of strengthening, uh, the joint authority, uh, passed a resolution requesting your approval of our resolution adding, uh, Douglas County to the Joint Development Authority of Metro Atlanta. Uh, a couple of things to note on this. The addition of Douglas County is the only change being affected by this request. The other provisions of the resolution will remain, uh, in place, including a prohibition of the Joint Development Authority of Metro Atlanta issuing revenue bonds. Be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions? If not, we have a motion, a resolution, not a motion, we have a resolution. Have the Henry County Board of Commissioners amend in the resolution authorizing the Henry County Development Authority to participate in the Joint Development Authority of the Metropolitan Atlanta, so as to provide for the additional, addition of Douglas County to the joint development of the Metropolitan Atlanta. Does somebody move in that direction? Have a motion District Two, uh, second from District Four. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Thank you. Thank you. Approval of the minutes for September the third and seventeen, twenty thirteen, October the first, October the fifteenth, twenty thirteen, November the fifth, fourteenth and nineteenth, twenty thirteen, December the third, uh, seventeen, twenty thirteen, and January the ninth, the twenty fourteen. Does somebody move? We approve the minutes as published. Have a motion District Two.
I'll say.
Second from District Four. Any, any, uh, further discussion, all in favor, raise your right hand. Okay. Public comments. Citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during the portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak, public comments must sign. Anybody, county clerk, you must sign your name, address specified. We have, uh, three. And if you would be so kind enough to, uh, come to the podium, state your name and address, and you get five minutes. Ms. Kathy Polatsky.
Good evening. Thank you. Kathryn Polatsky, thirteen Emory Street in Hampton. I'm a Henry County voter, taxpayer and resident of District Two. I'm also an employee of Henry County Public Library System. But I'm not here as a representative of the library system, the director or the Board of Trustees, and I want to make that very clear. I am here on my own time, on my own initiative, and any opinions I express are strictly my own. Public libraries in Henry County are dying of neglect. The Board of Commissioners has adopted a budget that keeps library funding at the same level as the previous year. But increased operating costs have put the library system at a two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar deficit for the fiscal year beginning July first. In recent weeks, I've discussed this with a number of county representatives. Some have blamed the state legislature for changing the funding formula for public libraries, and have suggested that voters contact their state representatives to complain. Public libraries are not a state agency. While this is a strategy that will be pursued when the legislature is in session, the fact is, the state legislature is not in session at this time, and any relief from them would come a year from now, if at all. In addition, the deficit was calculated before we even found out about the county, uh, state cuts. Some have blamed the previous Henry County administration for buying unneeded land, which is undoubtedly a factor. Others have blamed the library board, overlooking the fact that each member of the Board of Commissioners has an appointee on the library board who acts in consultation with you, and that the library board can only operate the libraries for as many hours as the Board of Commissioners will fund. Some have suggested that the library system apply for grants to cover the shortfall. Aside from some small grants from the state that are restricted to very specific uses, there are no grants available to cover basic library operations. That funding is expected to come from local government. And grants are available only for projects above and beyond basic services. If we can't keep the libraries open and adequately staffed, we cannot qualify for those grants. I was even told by a member of the Citizens Budget Review Committee that to give the library system an increase would mean eliminating public safety positions. This implies that the county has only two departments to fund, and to give to one requires taking from the other. This is not accurate, and setting up such a false dichotomy serves no purpose but to confuse the public. In fact, no amount of finger pointing, assessing blame, or even long-range planning, as valuable as that may be, will fix the immediate crisis facing our libraries. The challenge is real, it is here, and it is urgent. It has been suggested that the library board should simply continue with business as usual until the currently allotted funding runs out, and then ask the Board of Commissioners for more funding, which may be available if the economy improves. This would be fiscally reckless in the extreme. If the additional funding fails to materialize, all five Henry County libraries will close from the end of March through the end of the fiscal year at the end of June. Three months that the entire county would be without library services. And we've been told for years that just as soon as the economy improves, the county will try to do more for libraries. Every year, it's maybe next year. I've been with the library system for nineteen years, and at this point, I feel exactly like Charlie Brown in the cartoon with Lucy and the football. Every year, we're assured that things will be different next year, only to have that expectation yanked away at the last second. Henry County libraries have been underfunded since two thousand and nine. Henry County libraries have been underfunded since 2009, when the economic recession forced budget cuts from all funding sources. All county departments took hits at that time. And now at last, the economy has improved enough that the BOC felt comfortable declaring no furlough days for county employees, allotting $850,000 for new positions, and 1.3 million for raises for all county employees, not one penny of which was allotted to libraries. I don't resent other county departments for asking for and receiving whatever they need to operate. But at the same time, all full-time library employees currently have 52 furlough days per year. 52 furlough days. Benefits for part-time staff have been eliminated, all staff have taken pay cuts, and service hours have been cut from 58 per week to 32 per week. We have everything we need to rebuild a quality library system in Henry County. You have the facilities, we have a dedicated Board of Trustees, you have a highly trained and educated staff, you have library administrators who know how to run libraries efficiently and who understand library law and best practices. You have a public that understands and values library services. The only thing that is lacking is adequate funding. Without a budget amendment, the Library Board of Trustees will be forced to close at least one library. Who among you wants a locked-and-shuttered library to be part of your political legacy? Which one of you wants to look back at your political career and say, "The library in my district closed on my watch"? I know I'm out of time, but if we stop assessing blame, if we stop pointing fingers, only one entity has the ability, the resources, and the authority to fix the immediate problem so that we can work together on a long-term solution. That is the Board of Commissioners. You can be the heroes of this story. The library is full of stories, and I don't know how this one is going to end. But you have a chance to be the heroes here. You have a chance to save libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have number two, Tracy Rollison. Rollston?
Rollston.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
The kids call me Ms. Tracy. My name is Tracy Rollston. I am the children's coordinator for the Henry County Library System. I am children's specialist at the Fortson Library in Hampton. I'm here to talk about the library and as a mother who has children that use the library. This summer, at Fortson, we've had already 547 kids sign up for the summer reading program, 129 teens sign up, and over 100 adults sign up. That's just one branch. The fear of telling patrons, "We have to close our doors," scares me. It's not just my job, it is my passion. I love my job. I love handing a child a book and seeing them light up when they get it. I want to share this with you. If you give a child a book, he's going to want to read it. And as he reads it, he's going to think about what he's reading. And as he thinks, he's going to recall what he already knows and similar experiences he's had. As he thinks about those experiences, he's going to want to write. As he writes, he's going to want to talk to his friends and share his thoughts and ideas with them. As he talks to others, he's going to want to learn and discover more. Chances are, he'll find another book to read, and another, and another. As he reads more books, he'll laugh, he'll cry, he'll get angry, he'll get curious, he'll be frustrated, contented, thoughtful, thankful, smarter. And as time passes, he'll become a lifelong reader and visit libraries. If you close libraries, you have made a child sad, and these books become undiscovered. I service all kids that come in my library, homeschool kids, public school kids, private school kids, kids who are 22 and have a 10-year-old mindset, special needs. I do not turn any child away. I don't turn anyone away. You close those doors, you are turning away our future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mercedes Barker, 275 Hillview Road, Hampton. I'm one of those, I'm one of the families that visit the Hampton Library. We've been residents of Hampton for 15 years nearly. For 15 years, we've been visiting the library there in Hampton. My purpose for coming and speaking here tonight is twofold. One is property taxes, two is the library. They go hand in hand. I received my property tax notice about a month ago. My property taxes were doubled. But yet, at the same time, about the same day, I went into the library and saw real nice posters talking about how their funding had been cut. So you tell me, what are we supposed to do? You want more money, the county wants more of my money to pay for services, and yet, services, the services that we use in my home are going down dramatically. I'm one of those parents that Tracy was talking about. We are home educators. I have four children, five, five, eight, 11, and fif, nearly 14-year-old, I'm sorry, 14-year-old. And we've been using that library. Without libraries, it is nearly impossible to home educate affordably. People might say, "Hey, go and use the public school system." We have a constitutional right in the state of Georgia to home educate, and we, what we use as what's been granted to us by our forefathers of this country, namely Thomas Jefferson, was the library system. He had an extensive library of his own, and when he died, that became what became the Library of Congress, the founding of our country's library system. Without it, we are nothing. Think about this. Electronic books, one day, they can be changed. All it takes is one swipe of the computer. You get a hard book in your hand, and no one can change it because you've got it written down. Not only do we use a library for my bright, my bright and shining children, I also have one child who is dyslexic. And if it wouldn't be for the library, the local library, namely Ms. Tracy there at the Hampton Library, it would be near to impossible for me to have found, get my hands on all the books that I've been able to raise my 11-year-old struggling dyslexic reader to the level he's at, which is about a fourth-grade reading level at this point. You cut off the libraries, you've cut off learning in my home. You forced, you tied my hands and forced me into nothingness. I'm not, as a home educator, I am not entitled to the services that the public school system has. Once again, going back to property taxes, I noticed my tax bill, $1,000, which is half of my tax bill, goes to maintenance and operation of the public school system, building some really nice buildings in Henry County, nice public school buildings. Am I allowed to go into those schools and use their public, their library system there? I'm not, I'm not allowed to use their services, I'm not allowed to use their buildings, I'm not allowed to use their books. All I have is the public, is the public library to help educate my children. Keep on going, and we're not, we're going to raise a bunch of idiots as children. We're already heading that way with the failing public school system. Keep it going by closing down the school, the public libraries, and we're going to further push our country into decline. Thank you for giving me this time to speak to you.
Thank you so much. The chairman has no comments? Does any Commissioner have any comments?
I do.
District Two?
First of all, thank you guys, especially about the library coming and talking to us tonight, and a few of you, you know, I find it interesting, I mean, I have children, school-aged children, as well as children there in preschool, and I was really shocked how this all kind of came to my attention. It sounds like you guys kind of had the same notice, too, is that we found out the state, there's two funding sources for the library. There's a state, then there's local. We've, you know, the downturn occurred, and we've done everything in our power to keep funding at the same level we were from all the way from, I believe, it's the last four budgets. It's been the same funding. We even picked up a few additional things. We were just as shocked as everybody else was when we found out the state is no longer going to provide the money they are. So I hate that we're getting thrown under the bus here that we're the ones that have cut, because we have cut other departments. We've cut, you know, if you look at some of the departments that we had talked about with the county manager, so I think the Health Department, we've had to make cuts, Child and Family Services, I mean, this has been the worst economy since the Great Depression, and it has been rough, really rough for everybody. This is not a fun job. And that's what, it really broke my heart when my own 10-year-old daughter calls me up and says, "Daddy, I just went to the library, and they're handing out flyers, and there's posters all over the place saying, 'You're trying to shut down the library.'" It's no more, do you think I'd send my daughter and my two children, as well as my wife, as well as three or four other friends that came and rode with them, to a resource where I was trying to defund it? I have not heard one Commissioner up here that said, "We want to defund that evil library." Nobody does. We know it's an asset, it's a good thing in the community, we love libraries. But the problem is that we're now getting treated as enemies instead of friends. And believe me, we've heard the issues, we're going to find a solution. And when I've even mentioned, because I have been in meetings with the City of Hampton and others where we've talked about, okay, there's some assets like the Fortson Library, and I know a few of you have written me, because I've written a lot of responses to people on this library issue, and I said, "We're going to find a solution, but we also want this to be a team effort," where it's, it's the, the Board of Commissioners are going to find some additional money, we're hoping for additional revenue from some impact fees, but we also need the library board to help us out, if they have anything, they can help pitch in. And then, because I know the City of Hampton, I've been in meetings, so don't tell me I'm wrong on this, I've been in meetings where we've talked about, the City of Hampton, we're somewhere between 150 to 225 for the Fortson Library, and that's money that can be used to help get us through this budget crisis. We're going to potentially help out. Yes, ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
I just want to clarify that no official communication that has come from the library system has accused the Board of Commissioners of either defunding libraries or of closing libraries. However, the library board depends on that funding to keep open. So their hands are tied.
But you did, you did say, and Kathy, first of all, compliment to you, several people who are close to me said, because I told them that I'd been contacted, and some of the people, and they said, "Well, Kathy is one of the sweetest women, and she's very passionate." And I don't want to say who it is, because I don't want you to think worse of them for, because they actually know me and hang out with me. But I will tell you, the shock and awe, fear tactics have really bothered me, because nobody up here is against the library board or the library system, but yet, to hand out flyers and to make us the enemy, A number one, is unfortunate to me, because I think there's solutions to be had.
I agree.
But I'm hearing, it's all anger, and y'all, and you, the BOC, is shutting down the library. That's what I keep hearing, and that's what's being presented.
That has not come officially from any official library channel. That has not come officially. If that's what people are assuming, then we certainly want to clarify that. And regarding the Hampton building, and I emailed you on this topic as well. There is no official offer from the City of Hampton or any other entity for that building on the table at this time. If there were, the library board is more than willing to consider any reasonable offer on that building. However, and the thing to keep in mind is this, the same thing happened in Stockbridge and McDonough. We had old library buildings that were sold in both of those communities. We had brand-new SLOSS buildings that were built for libraries. In both of those cases, the money realized from that building, from the sale of the Stockbridge building, was put directly into the new Stockbridge building. The money from the sale of the old McDonough building was put directly into the new McDonough building at a later date for an expansion. So the citizens of Hampton are upset by the idea that that building might be sold and the money distributed through the rest of the county, when that is not the precedent that the library board has followed in the past.
And I get that. And it's just like I had a meeting, the chairman and I had a meeting with the city council here recently about our, the joint senior slash rec center that we're going to be putting in Hampton. And I'm glad that's a promise that's going to be fulfilled. But I will tell the public, and maybe I'm too honest, and that's the problem, I should just get up here and just tell you, you know, tell you, everything's going to be all right. But since 2008, things are different. And we can't, I know there's precedents, and I want to keep all precedents, but funding has become a much harder issue, especially with the state shedding responsibilities left and right.
I certainly understand that. And as I said, that will be addressed when the legislature is in session.
I gave you a chance to speak, and I'm trying to be very polite and respectful, but please let me finish my comments when I'm in the middle of a statement, too. Is that I don't appreciate, we have this new paradigm that we're working with economically, and we're trying to provide all the resources we possibly can, and we have a passion for this. Nobody joint does this because I think it's going to be a walk in the park. It's because we really do think we can do things better and help the community. And Kathy, I appreciate your passion, I really do, and I think we're more allies than adversaries.
I agree.
But I need the library board, and I don't think it's the library board, I need the activists to understand that when we write saying, "Please to contact your state legislature," I know they're out of session, but they have interim meetings, too, for funding issues and other things. It's much better if you start laying that groundwork with them instead of coming at us when we, we know the issue. I mean, and we're going to start working on, but this was brought to us after the budget, just like you said, you were shocked that y'all, that y'all found out about the funding. It was, I found out about this after the budget. So I know you're shaking your head, but I'm just telling you, nobody is against the library.
And nobody has intended to imply that, but I can tell you, I've been doing, I've been working for the library system a lot longer than you've been a Commissioner. I've been working there longer than you've been on the Board of Education. I've been working there a very long time. And the cuts that we're suffering for, while you pat yourselves on the back about keeping library funding the same for four years, that four-year period represents a part after the biggest budget cut in library history. We had to lay off 40% of our staff, and keeping it the same means that we have had no recovery at all. None. And I can tell you, I've been doing this long enough that year after year after year, trying to gently negotiate and gently ask for advice and ask for input has gotten us right where we were years ago.
And, and like I said, maybe I'm too transparent. The tactics always, you know, and maybe this is a fault of mine, honey is so much better than being, and you're putting us in a corner now by your just statement. You said, "Okay, we've realized that we're not going to get it unless we start harassing you guys." That's what I just heard.
No, that's not what I said.
I mean, maybe I misunderstood it, but you said, "I've tried to be gentle and nice, and we've realized that tactic's not going to work."
That's not what I said.
That puts us in a box. I mean, we want to be allies and work through this.
Well, that's exactly what the library board is hoping for, but there is so much misinformation going out right now, and so many things just getting repeated and repeated until it sounds like the truth, because people think it sounds familiar. And that's why I'm here tonight, is to address some of those misconceptions. Some of the things like, "Oh, we'll just fund the library with grants." It's not that simple. Or, "We'll just get volunteers," that's another one I've heard, "We'll just get volunteers to run the libraries." It's not that simple. There are legal issues involved in how libraries are operated. And we are asking for help, and every member, as far as I know, every member of the library board has gone to their own appointing Commissioner and has said, "Please give us some input. What do you want us to do? Our hands are tied. How can we fix this? How can we work together?" They're open to any suggestions you might have. So far, we have not heard a workable solution. And the bottom line is that the money will run out. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Listen, we want to... Anybody else like to make a comment? Yes, sir.
I would say, one, I mean, just to clarify a few things. One, yes, the property values are increasing, but this is the first time in the last five or six years they have increased. They've went down considerably. We did run through some hard time, and at one time, we laid off a large number of people. We've just started putting some back because the economy is coming back. We've got, I don't know, 500, 600 homes going up in Henry County now. They won't hit the budget until next year. A lot of things that are coming on now, a lot of the increases and revenue increases won't hit our budget until next year. We went from $122 million budget to $128 million budget. I would hope that there is something that we can do, and I would work diligently with the board and with our finance department to try and figure out if there is something that we can do. But regardless, we have been thrown under the bus, and the front wheels hit us, and then the back wheels ran over us. And I see you shaking your head, no, but it don't really matter, because at the end of the day, that's what we feel, that's what we see, that's the emails that we get. But I've worked with my person, you know, my board member, and I've told her that we're going to do everything we can, you know, to try and find some other funding, that, you know, at the end of the day, that, I think that's the best that we can offer. I mean, we're looking, we're diligently trying. But those numbers, the revenue numbers, the tax increase, if there is one at the end of the day, and whatever it may be, those, those numbers are not really going to hit the budget until the next budget cycle. They won't hardly hit it in this budget cycle.
Out to the floor, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else? The, we have a county manager, would you like to make some comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board knows that we've had a vacancy in the Henry County Police Department in the position of Deputy Police Chief. The position has been advertised, applications have been collected, interviews have been conducted, and I would like to make the board aware of the fact that Major Mark Amerman, current Uniform Patrol Division Director, is to be promoted to the position of Deputy Chief of the Henry County Police Department effective tomorrow. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. County Attorney?
No, sir.
The upcoming meetings, we've got Tuesday, July 1st, meeting at 9:00 a.m. has been canceled for July 1st, that's the weekend, that's the week of the Ford. Tuesday, July 15th, 6:30 p.m., is a regular board meeting. Does somebody move now that we adjourn into executive session to discuss pending and our potential litigation personnel matters?
So moved.
Have a motion District Four?
Second.
Second District Two? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. So moved. We in adjournment at the moment. Does somebody move? We go back into public session?
So moved.
Have a motion from District Four, second from District One. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. What's the second part of this? We have to have a motion to accept the affidavit. Does somebody move, we accept affidavit at executive session?
So moved.
Have a motion District Four?
Second.
Second from District Five? Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Somebody move, we adjourn?
Full motion.
Have a motion District Five, second District Four? Any discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand. Thank you. Good night.